So again. Thanks. So the state land is there highlighted in blue Zenith Drive private road is in white up at the north corner of the state owned land. The green line is the way Hidden Valley Road appears in our GIS. According to the GIS, it terminates in the middle of that privately owned parcel. However, the stamped survey. I can make it bigger here. Let me see. Hmm. See if I can zoom in a little bit. No, not gonna work. Yeah. Well, at the, it's probably hard to see, but in the far. Left of the screen to the west, it says end vacate with an arrow and the arrow points to the right of way ending at the state land. And that's the stamped survey. So Matt Mulder from Bonner County Road and Bridge submitted a comment opposing the proposed vacation. I'll just go ahead and read his comment into the record. The road and bridge department is opposed to this proposed vacation of public right of way. Existing public road as shown on the surveyed exhibits terminates at the border of parcel thirty seven fifty A, which is public land owned by the state of Idaho. All of the traffic that the applicants identify as a nuisance. As as a nuisance currently have legal public road access to this public land and eliminating that access would not be in the interest of the public. If the vacation request is approved, some consideration should be given to the sixty foot radius turnaround that is being proposed for dedication to the public. We support this dedication and suggest that the applicants be required to construct a suitable gravel turnaround. In the dedicated area rather than leaving it to the general public to construct at some unknown point in the future, which would likely never occur since Hidden Valley Road is privately is a privately maintained public road. That ends road and bridges comments. Also several public comments were received in favor of this project and these are included in the record that was given to the commissioners. So going through the code requirements and state code here. Idaho code says that the commissioners made by resolution declare their intention to abandon and vacate any highway or public right of way. Or to reclassify any public highway as a public right of way we're doing so is in the public interest. Idaho code further states that no highway or public right of way or parts thereof shall be abandoned and vacated. So as to leave any real property adjoining the highway or public right of way without access to an established highway or public right of way. The burden of proof shall be on the impacted property owner to establish this fact. So per county GIS parcel thirty seven fifty A owned by the state of Idaho has access. We had two different roads. Hidden Valley Road and Zenith Drive. The county GIS does not identify Zenith Drive as being owned by Bonner County. The county GIS does identify Hidden Valley Road as being owned by Bonner County. Based on the county GIS and the material submitted in this application, it does not appear that parcel thirty seven fifty A owned by the state of Idaho would have access to an established highway or public right of way if this vacation were to be approved. Staff has, as previously noted, received feedback from Bonner County Road and Bridge that opposes the proposed vacation. As stated by road and bridge, the existing public road Hidden Valley Road as shown on the surveyed exhibits does terminate at the border of parcel thirty seven fifty A. Parcel thirty seven fifty A is public land owned by the state of Idaho. Based on this application applicant submitted survey, staff agrees that the traffic that the applicants identify as a nuisance currently does have legal public access to this public land via Hidden Valley Road. Per the applicant submitted stamp survey, eliminating the public access on Hidden Valley Road would not be in the interest of the public. Idaho code has standard language that addresses things like sewer and gas easements. Staff has added a condition that any easements for sewer, gas, power lines, et cetera, should be granted an easement by the applicants should this vacation request be approved. Evidence in the record does show that the right of way is not abandoned. They're just going over the findings of fact again here. The applicant is requesting to vacate a portion of Hidden Valley Road located on the parcels enumerated on the screen. The applicant is requesting to vacate about two thousand eight hundred and twenty three feet of existing right of way. Based on the material submitted in the application, it does not appear that parcel thirty seven fifty A owned by the state of Idaho would have access to an established highway or public right of way if this vacation were to be approved. County GIS does not identify Zenith Drive is owned by Bonner County and county GIS does identify Hidden Valley Road is owned by Bonner County. Staff has received feedback from Bonner County Road and Bridge that opposes the proposed vacation because it would eliminate an existing public right of way to access public lands. Staff agrees that the proposed vacation would eliminate an existing public right of way providing access to public lands based upon the material in the record. Vacation of this right of way will not extinguish any rights of way or easements. For the continued use of existing sewer, gas, water, or similar pipelines and pertinences or other underground facilities as identified in section fifty five dash twenty two oh two Idaho code. For ditches or canals and appurtenances and for electric telephone and similar lines and appurtenances. And evidence in the record does show the right of way is not abandoned. If this is to be approved, staff recommends the standard conditions of approval that go with most vacations that come through the office. First, that the vacation of the above described right of way shall be effective upon the recording of a resolution by the Bonner County Commissioners granting the vacation. Second, that the costs for legal advertisements and reporting fees shall be borne by the applicant and shall be paid prior to the recording of the resolution vacating the right of way. And the third condition is the standard condition providing for easements for pipelines, canals, ditches, et cetera. So based upon the materials submitted to this file, staff recommends denial of the proposal to vacate a portion of Hidden Valley Road. That concludes my presentation. Were there any questions?
Any questions commissioners?
Why? Yeah. Had a couple of things. The one was about the. We're supposed to consider value. And if it's under a certain point, we don't have to worry about it, but this is from nineteen fifteen. I'm guessing that this was never, you know, it's never been taxed. It's never been. A portion of any of these people's. Property. So.
Right. So that you're what you're referencing is portion of Idaho code forty dash two oh three. By the way, for the record, my name is Bill Wilson. I work in the prosecutor's office and I help planning staff as we work through these files. There is portion of that code that said, if the commissioners determine that a highway or public right of way parcel. Want to give it away, then if you determine that it has a fair market value of two hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars or more. Then you may choose to require that the. Property owners who are going to be receiving the property pay that. It's discretionary. You have to make that call. And that's only, I think, in the event that you determine the vacation is appropriate. Couple steps you have to follow through before you make that an offer.
Okay, so normally, I guess in the case of this, it's suggesting denial. So maybe that's why there isn't. An analysis of whether or not it's got value of twenty five hundred dollars.
That doesn't actually, it just said. If it's been determined, if the commissioner is determined that a highway or public right of way has a value of two thousand five hundred or more, it doesn't say that. Who's supposed to provide that information or if that's supposed to be part of the part of the application. So. You could read that as being a burden of the applicant to show or collaboration with staff.
In the past, it's been staff has kind of.
I think they've worked with them. Yeah. So.
A good thing that came out of the Camp Bay was determinative definition from the assessor's office that if it doesn't have a parcel, it doesn't have a value. Can't they row didn't get a value either because it doesn't have a parcel number.
Number, we don't assess taxable value. So it's difficult to.
I see. It's a little different because you could track that clear back to when that right of way was given to the. The camp bay ownership. So it followed that, you know what I mean? It was it was a easement versus this. Even own right of way as you're like. Well, I mean, so this is us actually something we own. Or I presume that the county owns this property. We're giving it away or we're.
Thing we might want to seek value for that. I like said, the statute doesn't. Call out, it just says that if the if the commissioners determine. And so you can either say that that's from your own, you can determine that based on your knowledge and experience looking at the record of the record. Or you might say that that's hasn't been presented and you're not satisfied that you're. Continue the hearing and ask for valuation. That's if that becomes necessary. That is an option. To say that I'm, let's say in that case of your thing, I'm in favor of the vacation, but I do think we should provide get value for it. I'd like to see what that value is before we. Before approved, you could do that.
Well, we'll let the applicant go. Maybe Jeremy's got. I'm sure he does.
Hey, some more questions for staff? Do none. Thank you. Go ahead, Jeremy.
What? Before Jeremy begins, and I know we get we'll give him some more time. Dan, if you recall from the last vacation hearing, we had our three minute time limit for the public comment is our typical.
Oh, right.
Requirement for land use files, because this is a vacation statute that operates through different statutory authority.
I stand corrected.
Statute says is that the board has to entertain all related information. Sure. What the court has told us is that. Well, you've interpreted what the court has told us to mean. You you really can't put a timeline on how much, what you want to say. So I would recommend that we don't hold people to that. And that's let them say what they need to say. He's not recent upon book or anything like that.
As far as the protection.
Well. So that's on the road vacations only.
So it's just a small procedural difference.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Jeremy Grimm. We see rock planning for the record professional land use planner representing Spirit. Valley LLC and. Associated landowners in vicinity of Hidden Valley Road today. Thanks for your time. I'll try to work through this pretty quickly. I know you have a big agenda. The first thing I'd like to do is just enter into the record. An additional letter of support. There was a land transaction.
Never stamp it in.
There was a land transaction. So there's a new owner up off of Zenith that also supports this. So jumping into this back in nineteen fifteen. Road three twenty three, that's when this public right of way was originally petitioned to Bonner County for acceptance. Great, great questions. Commissioner Connolly, you know, I would put forth that, you know, it was these landowners back in nineteen fifteen that. Gave this road and dedicated the road to Bonner County. So or this right of way. All ten of them, kind of interesting ten inhabitants. That if you think back to nineteen fifteen, they were probably pretty excited living up there. There was a deal where you could petition the county and all of a sudden your muddy road would would imagine imaginarily be improved and graded and. You'd be able to drive right to your your horses or your Model T right to your house. So. It's been quite a while and there's been a lot of research done on this on this project. This has been a collaborative effort of all the homeowners. And proper errors at the end of Hidden Valley Lane for actually more than four years now. So keep in mind, we had ten people originally requesting this road dedication, the petition. And. When you, when you look at what we're talking about as staff presented per Bonner County GIS, the the orange there is a privately. Maintained road. And you can see that per the GIS, it it does terminate. Short of what our survey ended up finding the actual original dedication to be. When we look at, you know, this portion, this is sort of an overlay of the actual survey of that and you can you can barely see there, but on the last. Yep. Nice. Right there from the Thompson's home to the western terminus of the Thompson's lot. There's really no road and I'll show you that in just a moment. But that portion between the red bracket there is is really the portion that we're petitioning and seeking a vacation for today. When you look at the the survey, this is sort of. Exactly what it looks like. Here's the Thompson's property Heather and Josiah who are here today and will speak. And then this portion that continues west to the state of Idaho land is is a portion that's really not a road. The the origin point for the vacation is down here right below Zenith Drive. That's where they're proposing the dedication of additional land to build a proper turnaround, which doesn't exist today. If anyone. Were to drive up Hidden Valley Road, they'd actually be turning around. In fact, there's no way to do a three point turn without trespassing on the Thompson's land at their house. Again, just for a visual, this sort of shows you the corridor. You've got Zenith Road taking off to the north here and then Hidden Valley, the Thompson's home. And then this this portion of the road continues northwest that really isn't a road. So keep in mind, you know, originally there were ten owners petitioning to have this road. Taken over and maintained by the county. Today we have owners of thirty six parcels. The red parcels are the actual parcels that the right of way exists on. And then the blue parcels are all the letters of support and parcel owners that that are here today representing this and requesting this vacation. So there's really no, there's no private. Land anywhere upstream of this vacation. So everyone who would be accessing what we're asking asking to be vacated. Would still be able to access their property and are in support of this. So the staff report says, you know, based on the GIS, the material submitted, it does not appear that the state parcel. Seven five oh A would have public access and I think you just have to take into context the lay of the land there to to really see. That it does. When you look at the forty two oh three of Idaho code, it talks about, you know, roads shall be abandoned and then some other constraints. It hasn't been maintained at the public expense for three years in the previous fifteen. But also this big one that you you really can't abandon that if it accesses and surrounded by state of Idaho or US Forest Service land. And it that doesn't have any other means of access. Well, we believe it does. When you look at. The subject property, this is that that red box is a portion of, I'll call it upper Hidden Valley. That's not really a road. It's the right of way. And this is where staff was saying that is the only access to the yellow, which is the state land. But in fact, US Forest Service Road twenty five fifty starts in this lower. Black and red arrow and you can see it goes all the way up through that state land. And that is the preferred access to Hidden Valley Road. In fact, the Thompsons who live. In that red box, when they go to the state land, they actually go up. US Forest Service Road twenty two fifty because it's really the only access. So. The point in showing this is that the public will not be cut off if this vacation is approved from access to state of Idaho lands. This is a map from Idaho Department of Lands and that red square is the approximate location of the Thompson's home. So even the Idaho Department of Lands map shows that that road there does not continue up to the blue, which is the state land. You know, and and just for other color coding here. Light blue is state land. White is private land. Yellow is Spirit Valley LLC's land and the pink hashed is the Stimson lumberland. So just for a sense of topography. You know, this area is these this very steep ravine that that this this road. Right of way potentially access that state land. If this vacation were to go through and that was a concern, it is just a two point five mile. Drive from the proposed turnaround or round turnaround to Forest Service Road twenty five. Fifty, which then gets you all the way up on the mountain and it's a proper forest road that goes all the way up through all this state land. Just want to give you a zoom in here. This is the area that staff claims would eliminate public access on Hidden Valley Road. We've got the Thompson's house. The lower right here, that's the current terminus of what we would all agree is a road. And then that yellow on the left is that state land that I showed you on those IDL maps earlier. So this is really the the thrust of the staff's rationale for denial is that this is access to state land. And when you look at Idaho code, you know, it talks about abandonment, automatic abandonment if. You know, the right of way or road hasn't been maintained in three of the previous fifteen years. I think you can see here and your records would show that you've done no maintenance on this right of way. This is what it looks like. Mr. Thompson provided Josiah provided a photo of behind his house going kind of up to the state land. You can see it's. It's got, it's got rivers, it's got drainages, it's got no culverts, it's overgrown. In fact, this issue has been such a big deal up there, the broader issue of trespass and illegal activity. Back in two thousand fifteen, there corresponded between the state of Idaho. Department of Lands and Mr. Strauss. On the bottom portion of this slide, you'll see the state of Idaho is concerned with people trespassing across private property. And Idaho to enter into to steal to steal trees and lumber. So there've been illegal logging up there. So this Idaho Department of Lands decided to go forward with a memorandum of understanding to install a gate. To try to stop this trespass. And this is just an example. This is the MOU that was signed. Whereas Idaho Department of Lands is termed public activity occurring on the endowment lands being accessed through Spirit Valley lands where. Idaho Department of Lands desires to block access at the most logical cutoff point. So. Idaho Department of Lands is frustrated with this public and and. Access and public trespassing through private lands onto their property as well. You know, just to show you one of many photos that. Residents have provided, you know, frequently people will go up and build fires, drop off trash. There's numerous, numerous accounts of trespassing. There was a fatality in a four wheeler accident, unfortunately. On a portion of this area on Zenith. There's been that gate that IDL did install as a collaboration with Mr. Strauss was destroyed and then stolen. The sheriff's been out looking at potential drug cultivation. There've been multiple sheriff calls on the site and and onsite visitations. You know, more and more now we're seeing ORV users looking for access. For riding with more people living in RVs and remote working from RVs. They these residents have people coming up there looking for a place to camp for the night. So you know, the consideration, one consideration, I would argue that there is no value to Bonner County because this was given to them in the original petition, this right of way. But the consideration that I I think is legitimate is that by vacating this road. And putting up a proper gate, there will be a public benefit of reduction in demand for Bonner County Sheriff. Calls and responses to this area for trespass and other illegal activity. So in conclusion, Idaho code does establish a procedure to allow you to vacate rights of way. If approved, this will not eliminate access to the state or private land as I showed you through Forest Service Road twenty five fifty. It's right there. It's a proper access for that state land. All the property owners support this and they have agreed to a road maintenance agreement and will provide a turnaround, which the road doesn't currently even have. You know, there is a public interest in a reduction of demands in the sheriff department. It's been privately maintained as far as we can tell. And there's been no county maintenance work on the vacation area. In all legitimacy, it's not a road. It may have been an old errant right of way dedication, but the simple solution here is to. But the simple solution here is to um, uh, you know. Address the historical trespass uses to, to vacate this road. Um, I'd like to have uh, Mr. Strauss just speak to you for a very short time and then answer any questions uh, that you may have. Danny, come on up and just state your name for the record.
Yep. Uh, commissioners, thank you for your time today. Am I speaking into it?
Uh, it just captures.
A caption, okay. My name is Daniel Strauss and I represent Spirit Valley LLC, of which I am one of the members. At one point we owned four hundred and twenty acres. This has been a twenty off of Hidden Valley Road. This has been a twenty-year problem of trespassing. The bottom line is that the public does not use Hidden Valley Road to access. The state land to the west of Mr. Thompson's property. They use it to go on to Zenith and Glad. Which are, you can see the two offshoot roads. Um, that lower one. Well, you see the yellow. Those are now Zenith Drive to the north and Glad Lane to the south. They were unnamed as of a year or two ago. People are using HVR, Hidden Valley Road, the public is. To trespass and they're leaving behind trash, campfires, beer cans. There was a death. On our property or near our property uh, that happened through trespass. As Jeremy told, spoke, uh, John Gaddis of IDL, uh. Idaho Department of Lands contacted me many years ago and we cooperated on the installation of a gate. To stop uh, public trespass across our lands where they were stealing trees. That gate was damaged and stolen. Uh, I do believe that state lands, access to state lands is a great thing. Uh, it's one reason my family bought property in this area. But, but the bottom line is that Hidden Valley Road only goes to private lands. Um. Uh. So if, if the public has the right to go on Hidden Valley Road, that's fine, but as soon as they leave that public right-of-way, they're trespassing. Um. Uh, and furthermore. There's no road going across Mr. Thompson's eighty-two, that eighty-acre parcel. The state owns the sub thirty-seven fifty. Uh, it appears that that seems to be the biggest. Objection from staff is that we are taking away a public access to public lands. Uh, if you could look back one more time at this image, the reality is people are going up to those state lands. And that eighty-acre piece in particular, you can see. The roads are, can you point those, that road and that road? You can see that their IDL recognizes trail roads off of US two-five-five-oh. They go directly to that eighty-acre land. So there is public access and. Josiah will speak to the fact, I think that he hears people back there. I have no problem with people accessing public lands. I want them to use public lands. Uh, but we need to put it into this trespass and this ongoing nuisance. Um. We thank you for, I thank you for your time and I ask you to please approve the vacation. Thank you.
Any, any questions for your commissioners at this time?
Yeah, I. Yeah, go ahead.
It looks like the biggest disconnect here is whether or not the road access is. Seems like the, the basis that the staff is relying on is the survey that was submitted as part of your guys' application.
Correct.
So can you explain why, like, that was submitted?
Yep.
Um, can you help us understand?
Sure.
The difference between what was submitted with the application versus this other stuff that we're doing now?
Yeah, so this goes back to nineteen fifteen. There's been, like we said, a lot of research done. We went back in the books. We really wanted to make sure we were doing this right and that we weren't subjecting either the property owners. Or the county to any liability questions or confusion. So in, in looking at the original, um, you know, nineteen fifteen dedication. Uh, here's part of the description. There is a further description, which is where Mr. Proval pulled up his. His, got all these line segments, this survey that goes all the way up. So um, despite uh, what is in fact. Uh, to any reasonable person, the terminus of the road at Josiah's property right here. Um, right here in the middle. In fact, the original nineteen dedication did go all the way back. Um, all the way up to this western boundary. So we just wanted to be forthright and we wanted to make sure that there was no. Questions or um, you know, hair on this in terms of something that could catch anyone up. And again, we would submit that um, staff's right in looking at that, but in fact, Forest Road. Uh, twenty-five-fifty is the primary access to this parcel of state land as well as the whole conglomerate of state land um, behind.
Thank you. I'm all up here, guys. Sorry that it's still a floor. So from recent experience, we found that. There, there is a tangible difference between the vacation and validation, right? Do you think it would have been more appropriate to seek a validation of the road as well so that there could be more. Uh, closer examination of like, kind of like saying, before you want to go to the vacation step, you want to know what you have before you give it away.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we've, we've learned the hard way for in, in recent court proceedings that that's probably the, the cleaner option. Do you have a response to that?
Yeah, I would just um, come back to the original. Um, in this case, we were able to find a dedication and petition. With specific rods and distances and lengths that Mr. Proval was then able to um. Uh, connect to uh, a, a proper survey, modern survey. So um, in this case, we feel that um. There is sufficient evidence. There's no question that this, it was road thirty-seven back in the day. Um, actually not thirty-seven, um, three-twenty-three, um, that it was dedicated, uh, petitioned and taken over. Uh, given to the county. So we just feel like there's, the validation is there and we just want to be transparent and show you that. This is how it's functioning and the, the lack of need for it in, in my client's opinion.
Um, so I guess my biggest first question is, did you reach out to IDL? Because it sounds like in the past, they've been like, we don't want this access anyway. That would have. Absolutely made this thing just. If IDL wrote a letter in the file that said, we have no interest in this um, access. I would have been like, let's go. But without that, it leaves that. Does the IDL agree with this vacation and they are axed, they have a potential for access from this road?
Great question, uh, Commissioner Connolly. Um, just if it's not clear, the, the gate and stealing issue of timber. This is Zenith Drive, just above where the proposed vacations to start. Currently, IDL was having uh, issues with people coming up Zenith Drive, private drive. And then stealing lumber off of this parcel up here. So IDL was aware and they did actively work with Mr. Strauss to try to gate the road. Zenith Drive right here. Um, as for this questionable continuation and access west of the Thompson's home. Um, I, I just want to bring up IDL's own map. The reason they probably didn't comment, even though they were notified as an agency, is that. On their own map, this is an IDL map, they do not show uh, Hidden Valley Drive uh, extending beyond Thompson's house. In fact, no one probably would have even known that if we hadn't done the research and found that original. Deep in the books of the archives of Bonner County, that original uh, legal description. So um. IDL doesn't even believe per their own map that Hidden Valley Drive goes, continues further west past the Thompson's home.
They're just, no, they're just identifying that uh, public access beyond that because they didn't have that.
Right, right.
But what, what, what I'm saying is that there's a simple fix for this. Have we had you guys? Because I'd say it's applicant's um, job to reach out to anybody that might have a claim to the access to the. Um, right-of-way. And comment.
Yeah, um, Commissioner Connolly, if you get there to a point where that may or may not be the sticking issue, uh, what I'd suggest is. Uh, maybe a continuation so that we could try to secure such a letter. But um, as staff presented, uh, the agencies that were notified, we had no opposition from IDL on this. So. Uh, I would defer to you on that one, but uh, if that's a sticky wicket, um, you know, that, that could, that could potentially be a solution. But at this point, we feel that it's, it's pretty clear based on IDL's map that they don't consider this access to state land.
Were they notified and did not respond?
Um, they were one of the agencies.
You have any questions? Thank you, guys.
You bet.
Did you have anybody else that wanted to speak?
Us, they're going to speak at the public.
Okay. Okay, so we will go ahead and uh, open this up for public comment. Um, who is in, anyone that wish to speak in favor of this? Make sure, why don't we, we'll start with him and then we'll go to you. Go ahead and go to the microphone and identify yourself by giving us your name and then you can, and away you go.
Josiah Thompson, my own property in the portion that we're requesting be vacated. Um. I appreciate road and bridge, um, wanting to keep access open to the state land and. I'd, I as well want to keep access to that state land. That, this would hinder that access in no way. Nobody's using that. As you can see, that road above our house in the map is nothing more than a skid trail. Um, we included it in the description. To eliminate. Confusion with the old, what was submitted, what he had up there. I don't have access to the slides, but. Um, that isn't used. We, there's. People up on that state land. Every weekend and most evenings that access that through twenty-five-fifty. Because there's. No real access through our property. And as uh, Jeremy, I believe, said, when we want to access that state land above our house. Because the terrain is so closed up there, we actually drive around Blackstone and go up to twenty-five-fifty and get. Up there in that network of roads that does. Land anybody access to that portion. So that's definitely not. Not, not the only access there and, and definitely not the easiest access. Um, we'd like the road vacated for all the reasons mentioned in the presentation. And the only disagreement I have with staff is that they, they mentioned that we. The nuisance traffic is accessing state land through Hidden Valley Road and that's not true. They're accessing private property that. Had theft issues, trying to set up campgrounds on, on our private property and. And that's in closing, I'd request that you support the vacation of this portion. Thank you.
Anybody else, a gentleman in the back wanted to speak in favor? Uh, yeah, yeah. Make sure you identify yourself with the record.
Good afternoon, commissioners and city attorney. My name's Bill Hertzberg. I've lived on Hidden Valley Road for thirty years, myself and my wife. And have experienced a lot over that period of time. I guess there's two areas I wanted to speak to. One is. What it is that's being called a roadway. I wanted to comment on that first. And second, the trespass and hassle issue. There's some interesting stories over the last thirty years. With regard to the roadway, first of all. I mean, I've known for a good long time the gentleman that lived on Josiah's property before Josiah moved in. Um, and I think that that photograph you all saw in the snow is pretty generous. As you walk up that roadway, there's no roadway. There never will be a roadway. Nobody, no municipality would ever build a roadway or cultivate access. Unless it was just for temporary fire protection or something up that steep ravine. The trespassers won't even go up there to speak of in large measure. As uh, Danny Strauss spoke to, the trespassers aren't stupid. They come up there, they access. Uh, that area and then they use uh, Zenith Lane, which was named a few years ago. Or Glad Lane, which was just named months ago to trespass. So they make their way into the private lands and such. But nobody's ever going to do anything ever with that steep ravine. It ain't going to happen. If you sought for yourself, you'd concur. You know, then moving off that topic and to the trespass topic, there've been some interesting. We had a guy that was camping up there for days and I, I caught him on the road. I stopped him, asked him if I could help him. And what his name was, I could really only understand about half of what he was saying, but he takes his badge out from around his neck. And I'm in my car with my brother and it says inmate Aaron Arndman. You know, this guy's camping out up in the. Um, we had a, aside from that incident, we had a series of incidents. You know, I never have to call the police for anything in term, uh, you know, having to do with anything other than stuff like this. Um, the police came out, it was either three, four, or five times because we had a series of incidents. With uh, people breaking the window of my office building on the property, doing, stealing some stuff. And uh. The police thought it was somebody trying to cultivate marijuana and grow marijuana up in the, in the hills behind our house. We never did get to the bottom of it. It ended up going away. Um, my son has been raised on the property and when uh, hunters would trespass. I mean, it's scary. My little guy, I couldn't let him go outside or we couldn't even go and tell the trespasser, hey, you're trespassing. This is private land. Please don't hunt here because I wasn't going to do that. If a guy has a gun, you may think I'm a deer. So, you know, we had uh, there's so many stories over thirty years with regard to incidents. Oh, and every time my son and I would go and take a walk up Glad Lane, which didn't have that name then, or anywhere up in the mountain. I mean, here we are, the owners of a hundred and thirty acres, we take a trash bag with us. That was our normal. You know, to pick up the stuff. And one time, that I'll conclude with this, this was ridiculous. A guy dumped like dozen batteries, car batteries, and about thirty, thirty-two tires I loaded up that were in the creek. Um, and took them to the dump and then the, what do they call the dump department, uh?
Solid waste.
Yeah, solid waste. I, I called them and they waived the fee for, you know, five bucks a tire or whatever it was. Because I was basically just doing a good deed. But I mean, I could go on and on and on, thirty years of all kinds of stuff. You know, sometimes it gets worse, sometimes it gets better, but that's the reality on the ground. Thanks a bunch for.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor? Seen, no, no one online? Oh, do you want to go ahead and speak? Yeah, yeah, make sure you identify yourself with the record.
Um, my name is Heather Thompson. I, I live at the house at the end of the road. Um, I would like this vacation to be approved. Um, for, we have several trespassers who come, hunters come. Um, and the pictures aren't super clear, but. My house is right along the road, so there really isn't even a, a three-point turnaround where anyone can turn around. Um, that's not on private property. So that, that's frustrating when you hear a car coming. I never know who's coming. I'm home alone um, by myself a lot. My husband works a lot and um, I've had gentlemen come up on four-wheelers um. And stop and I, I go up to chat. I have my gun with me and my dog with me and they, they just stay and. Ask very weird questions. So I would ask that it be vacated for safety purposes.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor? Anyone neutral? Yes, are you neutral? Are you sure? You're not neutral because I know you. I'll throw your butt out of here. Okay, this will be interesting. We rarely ever have anybody that's truly neutral.
Wayne Martin. Uh, just a few things. Uh, did mention the gate having been stolen in the past. It's very possible it could be done again. Uh, there is no guarantee that there'll be a reduction in calls for first responders. Uh, there is value to the land, uh, whether the state or the county's been taking care of it. Uh. IBL and others agencies do slip up. Things do get missed uh, in forwarding reports. And doing paperwork. Um, and if you don't believe that, go back and look at stuff and, and look at current stuff. Uh, lumber theft, uh, are they coming through the property uh, on HVR? Or is it someplace else that they're, they're using? Just things to be aware of. And then the comment about people trespassing. I live off of a private road and we have people that are trespassing all the time. Out in our area, we've got people that are trespassing, hunters that are trespassing all the time. So it's not. An isolated thing for them. So it's just to be aware. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Didn't sound very neutral with this. Yeah, but you were about as close as anybody's gotten, so.
I'm sorry. But to you, we'll give you the benefit of the doubt.
Was there something you needed? I, I don't want to start a debate here.
Well, once we've given time, I think.
Okay, go ahead.
No, no, I, I, I didn't, I meant, once we, once somebody is.
Oh, once she's had her chance.
Then we've had your chance.
Yeah, because what I, I don't want to.
Do want to accept all related information, but you gotta take the chance.
Yeah. Anyone else uh, that's neutral? Well, wait a minute, before you get up there, you better know it's neutral.
Well, Matt Lynn Scott said.
Listen, it's not difficult instructions.
Well, well, it depends on this answer, if I'm forward or guessing.
Well, well, it depends on this answer. If I'm forward or against it, I suppose. Um, you know, we've seen these road vacations come up uh recently. And my question for you, such as that nineteen fifteen petition. I'm not a hundred percent sold that that petition is an actual grant. Yes, it may be a right of way, but is it more on the lines of an easement versus a true grant that we are typically fee simple, separate RP number? So if it's a prescriptive easement at that, in my opinion, which in my opinion, that's kind of what it's closer to instead of an actual grant, it's it's a prescriptive easement right of way. Um, that's what it's closer to, in my opinion. I don't know if that would change the complexion of this at all. I don't know if Bill or or maybe.
I disagree because the prescriptive is is use. Through use, but this is a it's a dedicated, whether it's a easement or it's a fee simple is is up for.
Right. And and that's my opinion is that it is is not a true grant because those words, you know, grant convey those those dedication words are not utilized in the are not utilized in the petition. So it may be an easement. I agree. But I don't know if that changes the complexion on the.
Does to me, but that's just me.
I can I can comment. I don't know how to answer this specific question. I will just kind of repeat my my concern with having more than I care to that your obligation is to consider the public interest when they can make something. If you don't have a very clear handle on what that is, it's really hard to do a good job determining the public interest. And the way, the best way to determine what to have is utilize forty dash two oh three A validation. And so I would recommend to everybody here and anybody listening. If you are interested in vacating something in order to. It's in your best interest to apply for validation at the exact same. Do it in one year. And this gives you power, it gives the board the authority to actually make a determination of what the what they're what's actually there because you need to know what that is before you can determine whether or not it's a good idea. That's my concern. File the fact that there is at least some debate as to whether what the the endpoint of the road is. You guys might not all be aware of this, but we are in litigation right now, not dealing with certainly the endpoint of a roadway has become a hot point of a contentious issue, not one that ends at public land, but at public water. We've had great, great difficulty trying to figure that out. The problem is when something is couched as a vacation, the decision is made in the public interest. And then later on, if the matter is litigated, the natural impulse of the parties is to try to determine what actually to do the the validation at the at the district court level, which I do not believe is supported by the statute that has to happen here. So it puts the cart in front of the horse. That's my problem. That's my problem with this file. It's my problem with our previous. So that's my public service announcement. You're going to do this. You ask for a validation and a vacation at the same time. So everybody knows exactly what we're what we're potentially making.
Okay. What do you got? Can you make it short? Yeah, cause we've got a bunch of stuff. Okay, go ahead. Quickly.
One in nineteen ninety-nine, Phil Robinson and also John Top analyzed and evaluated that uh that documentation, an eighteen fifteen documentation and the viewer's report that accompanies it. That's number one. Number two. Um, the private landowners have been paying taxes for decades on this roadway land, which according to that D to nineteen fifteen information is owned by the county. Thanks.
Hey, anyone, anyone against, anyone opposed to this? You have kids? You guys want to speak? Want to take a minute? It was like when kids come.
Good, good kids.
Well, you know, it's like, can't believe he can sit this long. It's pretty boring stuff. Okay. So then we'll go ahead and go for rebuttal then.
Thank you, Commissioners Jeremy Graham, Whiskey Rock Planning uh for the record. Um, just in terms of rebuttal, um, you know, uh, Mr. Wilson's comments are are taken to heart, but in this case, uh, based on that viewer's report, based on the research that is irrefutable, um, it seems quite clear that this is a um, a public right of way that was dedicated back in nineteen fifteen at the petition request of ten individual uh inhabitants of the area. Um, there's no question about that. There's a legal description, um, which really brings you down to two, two points. One is staff's concern that potential vacation of this road, this right of way would strand or limit access to state lands. Um, as was shown in the record, um, Forest Road twenty-five fifty is the primary access to those state lands. In fact, the residents abutting it actually use that to access the lands, even though it's twenty acres behind their house. And then finally, um, the public interest. The I guess the converse applies to what is the public interest in in keeping this? It is a dead end right of way that services only um a handful of uh private parcels. And um, I would put forth that their public interest as well as private interests are that um this public access to their private property serves no public interest. So we humbly and um humbly, just humbly request that you consider uh their plight and the challenges they're facing and uh approve this vacation.
Humbly?
Yes.
Wow. I need a moment. I'm just kidding.
Before you begin deliberation, can I also, I'd like to follow up with one extra thing on my comments and Jeremy. Remember again, so I said it's difficult to make the determination on the public interest, but not impossible. So if you were to satisfy that it would be in the public interest to give this away regardless of whether or not it touches, does actually terminate on the public on public land because you're satisfied that that public land has alternative access? And you made that a specific part of your findings, you might be able, that might be okay. It would just have to be clearly articulated in your deliberations that you would say even if we're not a hundred percent certain as to the endpoint of this road. Even if it does touch, let's assume for the sake of argument that it does touch this this publicly owned property. I'm still satisfied with giving the road away because of X and I still find that it's in the public interest, even assuming that's the case. I think you probably that would that would be legally defensible as well. It's just you're you're forced to kind of get into hypotheticalism and all my other comments still now. I'm just saying it is, it's not impossible to do it this year.
Did staff need a chance for rebuttal? Sorry, okay. We'll go ahead and close any further public comment and go into deliberation. Yeah, I think what for me, there's there's two big issues here. One of them is is um access to public land and it's been established there already is access to public lands. We're not worried about that. Um, the second is the uh, the practical versus what's shown up on the survey. And while I understand the legal ramifications was shown up on the survey, the practical application is that road for for is a privately maintained road. So we have it, the county hasn't put any money into it. It terminates at a resident's house. There might be a goat trail going up there, but uh I don't see the issue. I don't. I don't see it being an actual part of the road, at least on the functioning part. It hasn't been maintained. You know, they've done no improvement. There've been no improvements made to it. And as far as public interest goes, I think there's a good argument to be made for applicants and the neighbors around there that are affected by this um are also part of the public. So to me, it would be a more focused public interest. But it remains nevertheless a public interest. Um, I can feel for the folks up there. We've got a large chunk of family property on the sunny side that we're constantly having to deal with trespassers. Um, gates don't always work, unfortunately, but it doesn't mean that you shouldn't try. And so that's where that's where I come down to this. I would lean to to go ahead and vacate. Um, although I do agree, I wish they would have gone for validation so we knew exactly what we were vacating. But I think practically we can look at this and go, okay, based on what we see on the ground, the facts on the ground versus what's on the on the survey. The actual portion being used, the fact that this was given to the county to begin with as as a right of way versus the county having to take it or purchase it. Um, it seems fairly clear to me that I can move.
If you're the other commissioner, if you were at least one other does, if you guys are prepared to vote on that, you should also if you're not interested in asking for compensation, you should state that on the record and say why. I think you kind of already did, but that's I know that's putting the cart in front of the horse.
Yeah, let's see what we'll.
Cause we want to make sure.
We'll get comments from all three of us from all of us. Maybe we can determine what that next step looks like. So.
So yes, I'm going to wade clear in um because because of the situation we've been put in in several of these where we've been called out on, you know, public interest, define that. I'm going to, I'm going to take the more cautious route. Um, I do believe that IBL has an alternative access and and I believe that that's what they'll use. But I don't know that. And the reason I don't know that is because they've chose not to comment. But they're an adjoining landowner, so they should have been contacted. So say if I owned that eighty acres up there and everybody was just like, well, they don't count because they're not utilizing this road. That that right of way is still there for the purpose of accessing that if they choose, correct? So I would, I should have been and would have been notified by them and either joined in their you know, fight to get it um. That or I mean, how valid? You got me saying that. Chose for valid. Or I would have chosen not to and said, you know, I I always want that there just in case because you know, I mean, yeah, they it looks like they've logged up or and I don't know what they're up to. I'd love to know. So to me, we need a letter from IBL stating that they're either in favor of it or indifferent or or not in favor of it. And then the other thing is, is I think it it even if we don't believe that the county is entitled to value, we should require that that is presented to us to then make that determination. We're right now just saying, well, you don't really think it has any value. I think that we've been taught that, I mean, we've been had this thrown in our face a million times um with the Camp Bay stuff is that we're giving it away. We're giving it away. We should at least look at it and then act on that. And I think that the problem is is that, you know, with state code, you know, it's pretty broad, but I I do believe we should at least look at that as as a possible. You know, talk, a talking point and then then.
But so would your proposal then be a continuation?
Yeah, that's that's what my, because those are continuing. Continuation to try to provide more information on specific.
Yeah, the fact that we are looking at access to public land. Uh, Idaho Department of Land was contacted in the file here. It says they were. They didn't comment. Uh, would have been nice had they commented. I think IDL would be the only one that really has interest in it because it's not even if I wanted to hunt that. I probably am not starting in bottom of the hole. I would come from the top. And there is that. And uh yeah, you know, always negotiate an exit on the downhill side if you have to. But uh yeah, I think I think our attorney is spot on. Get the get the IDL thing, make them force them to say something one way or another. And then that clear that part up and uh then if we got the validation, then we can say exactly what we get away with. And so.
Well, I don't even think we need. If IDL signs off.
If they sign off.
To me, that that takes the validation off.
By virtue of this deliberation, it can be clear from the record for anybody who's opposed to this. That you guys were satisfied that it was in the public interest to vacate this, even if like assuming arguendo that the road did actually go further up. And so that would be legally defensible because you could say, you know, assume that for sake of argument and even if, you know, given that argument to the opponents, we still think it's in the public interest to give this. That that's fine. Um, it's just, you don't have that clarity here because the work hasn't been done. You can still do it if you especially getting that comment from from the state. If they don't care.
But they are the neighbor.
Because they because they have the alternative access. That would, I think that would be good.
For me, it would be because I I would support it, you know, other than that little hitch and then the value. I still think we need to, you know, look at the values.
I guess we'd have to work. Jeremy would probably be, you know, good partner in that. I don't know if you how you appraise something like this, if you do it all. And I know our planning staff could work with it too, but um, that's all.
They could do more research, um, what Matt.
Length by right of way width. Give you acreage.
But on the.
Difficult because assessors don't really. Well, you think they 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 fix like a flat rate to it or they don't do it at all.
That's not, that's not really important. Well, not. Have a real. But the one comment was is that they have been paying taxes on it. If that's the case, then I guess it's a mutual.
Well, I was going to say, and that's the that's kind of the the give and take here is the county didn't pay anything for it, which is one thing, but then um, they've been paying taxes, even if they weren't paying taxes on it. Then it would also be relatively in the public good to add that back onto the tax rolls and now it becomes taxable. But if they've been paying taxes on it, then um, it's it's a it's a wash anyways. I mean, I think a reason I don't know why a reasonable person couldn't say, okay, listen, here's what the road width is, right away width, here's the length. Um, let's look at what the taxes are divided by the the amount of acres. Turn that value to acreage.
Good.
Gives you an estimate.
Cause the statute doesn't give us a lot of guidance. It just says if the commissioner determined that the property is worth more than twenty-five hundred bucks. How you're left to do that is not stated in the statute. So yes, we it'd be nice if we just had an assessed value. We could plop down on it. That's not the exclusive, though. Like an appraiser might might be able to give us, you know, if if you were to continue this, find an appraiser that that can give it, give um an estimate.
None of that.
Be evidence in the record that would be completely.
Um, if their if their tax assessment doesn't show on their tax assessment a deduction for public right of way. And they've been paying taxes on.
That's true. Yeah. And I think that's.
It may not speak to it.
And then even when you look at value, so it's really not even fair to do the the way the way I the formula I suggested, only because what is truly the value of a fifty or sixty foot strip of land dissecting someone else's property? If you were looking at market value, right? Someone going to buy that, we know, we know as a fact for a fact that it's difficult to even sell that stuff because we picked up all that right away over Blanchard area and head auctioned it off when we got pennies on the dollar for it.
Good. Well, then then that's perfect. So make that part of your deliberation and say, this is inherently difficult. We were basing this on past experience and we think it has the minimum value less than twenty-five hundred dollars. So we're not going to do it. That'd be fine too. I just like, we've got to make sure that I just agree we need to address so that we create a good defensible record for what.
So then what I will do is I will change the motion to um what's the term? I just lost it. Sorry. Continue. Wow. Sorry, I want to make mental vacation for a second. I'll go ahead and continue or a motion to continue this until we get uh um, till the applicant brings us something from IBL that that supports what they want to do, uh, which I think is fair. And they need to bring us a some type of evaluation of that strip of land.
Just work with staff to come up with the best case scenario and then a better argument about whether or not.
Yeah, I just.
Um, that's my, um, I make the motion to do that continuation. I think that we probably should have a date certain because otherwise this.
How much time do you guys need?
We're going to have a two week lead time on the notice anyways. It couldn't be any shorter.
We did get.
Already here in September fourth.
Okay, you want to go? Let's make it the ninth.
That work?
That work for you guys?
Uh, it's two weeks. Um, yeah, we'll we'll get after it.
Okay. Yeah, let us know.
Now would second that motion.
Hey, we have a motion to second to continue to a date certain of uh November ninth. Um, roll call vote. Hi.
Bye.
All right.
The motion passes, so we are continuing this file till November ninth. Okay. Let's move to a file VS zero 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 two dash two two. Let's move to a file VS zero 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 two dash two two. Staff can begin whenever they're ready.
Okay, once again, Jason Johnson with Bonner County Planning. Uh, we're here today to. As in the scrolling. I don't want to just share what's, what's on my screen.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay, so we are here today to discuss file zero 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 two dash two two, uh, vacation of a portion of Harris Avenue. The applicant is requesting to vacate a portion of Harris Avenue adjacent to the parcels that you see on the screen there. The area highlighted in the hatched diagonal lines is the area proposed to be vacated. And the dates for the required noticing for this file are on the screen in front of you. So the right of way acreage to be vacated is about twenty-five thousand six hundred square feet per GIS estimate. Uh, the easement is forty feet wide. We're in the suburban zone in the transition land use designation here. There's no water and sewer service according to GIS, but the area to be vacated is just outside of the West Bonner Water, Water and Sewer. Our county GIS, uh, it's in the West Pondure Fire District and School District number eighty-three. An aerial view of the area to be vacated is highlighted in red or maroon there on the screen. Again, suburban zoning and transition land use designation. Uh, transition being the most flexible land use designation in the county. Basically, any zoning can be applied to it with a proper application. And this is a suburban zone surrounded by suburban zoning on all sides. Pretty unremarkable for natural features, except that there are some fifteen to thirty percent slopes at the southern end of the vacation area. For the most part, the vacated area is Bonner gravelly silt loam, which is a prime ag soil. Uh, but again, these prime ag soils are basically adjacent to a subdivision. And in a transition land use designation, so not really, um, designated to zone for farming. The agencies that were noticed in the course of review of this file are on the screen in front of you. The Bonner County Road and Bridge submitted some comments on this file. I'll just go ahead and read those into the record. The Road and Bridge Department is in support of this application for road vacation. A subdivision Cedar Park, which will provide new connectivity in the area, has had the preliminary plat approved. And is working towards final plat approval and construction of the new roads, which will provide connection to Nagle Road, making these existing undeveloped public rights of way obsolete. The new right of ways, which are proposed for dedication on the preliminary plat are more acreage dedicated to the public and better connectivity. Road and Bridge requests that our condition be put on this vacation that should Cedar Park Platinum not be finalized. These roads be rededicated to Bonner County or other suitable right of way dedication, which provides connectivity in area. No public comments were received in the preparation of this, uh, on this file prior to the preparation of this presentation. As we saw, staff has received feedback from Road and Bridge that supports this vacation. Um, basically what we're here to do is an administrative step. On the process of file S zero 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 two dash two two. It's the Cedar Park subdivision second edition plat. It's already received preliminary approval. And before we can go to final approval, we need to vacate this area so that the plat that's planned over to the. Uh, to the east can actually go through and, and be approved, uh, finally, as it has been in the preliminary plat. Um, I, 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 it's not my file. I can't comment in detail on this subdivision. I haven't worked on it. I did look through the file. Um, the plat that's been submitted looks, yeah, a lot like what's been submitted here minus the. Area that we're vacating. It's supposed to be turned into lots, uh, per the subdivision that's already pending. Um, as requested by Road and Bridge, staff has added a condition. That should Cedar Park Platinum not be finalized, that the rights way in question in this application shall be rededicated to Bonner County. So based on the some materials submitted in the application. No real property adjoining the area to be vacated would be left without access to an established highway or public right of way. Uh, this is doubly true, given the fact that the whole thing is going to change with the platting over to the east anyway. Um, we've already got different accesses planned. Vacation of the right of way won't distinguish any easements for sewer, gas, water, similar pipelines, electric telephone service, et cetera. Uh, condition three in the staff report covers that. There's no evidence in the record that shows that this public right of way has been used by the public and no evidence in the record that shows that this public right of way has been maintained at the expense of the public. In at least three years during the previous fifteen years, based on evidence in the record, it looks like this right of way is abandoned. Uh, findings of fact, pretty simple. The applicant is requesting to vacate the portion of Harris Avenue located adjacent to the parcels on the screen. It's about twenty-five thousand six hundred square feet. Again, that's a GIS estimate. That's not out of the application. That's. Staff estimate from the GIS resources from the county. Um, based on the materials submitted in this application, no real property adjoining the area to be vacated would be left without access to an established highway or public right of way. Staff has received feedback from Bonner County Road and Bridge that supports the proposed vacation. Staff has received no comment or feedback opposing the proposed vacation. Vacation this right of way will not extinguish any rights of way or easements for the continued use of existing sewer, gas, water, or similar pipelines and appurtenances. Or other underground facilities as defined in section fifty-five, twenty-two oh two Idaho code. For ditches or canals and appurtenances and for electric telephone and similar lines and appurtenances. Evidence in the record appears to show that this public right of way is abandoned. No evidence exists in the record to show that this right of way is in use. The first three conditions are the standard conditions that go on to every vacation. About how, uh, we make the vacation effective, about paying for the legal fees by the applicant. Continued use of sewer, gas, water, electrical lines, an easement for that. And then the fourth condition that was added per Road and Bridge request. Should the Cedar Park Platinum not be finalized, the right of way areas noted in this application and in the staff report shall be rededicated to Bonner County. Again, this is sort of an administrative step in an existing plat that we already have running. So based on materials submitted to this file, staff recommends approval of this proposal to vacate the portion of Harris Avenue. That concludes my presentation. Were there any questions?
Any questions for staff?
Probably just the same questions, you know, um, so we just went through it.
Evaluation.
Evaluation and making sure that it's in the public's interest.
Well, sure, yeah, so it sounds as though the public interest component of this is more straightforward, given the, the comment from staff. Or and from Road and Bridge, um, the, I want to go back to that, that valuation portion of the section of the statute that we kind of continue to wrestle with. It does say that. Guys are just called to determine what the value is and doesn't give us much direction, but then it's also discretionary. It says that. If you determine that it has a fair market value of twenty-five hundred dollars or more, a charge may be imposed. Um, upon the acquiring entity not in excess of that fair market value. So even if you. I, I think another, another way to skin that cat would be to say, you know, in this, for example. In this case, because the conclusion is that it's been abandoned, uh, even if we were to determine that it has some fair market value, we choose not to impose that on them because. It wasn't too wise, something like that. You could, you could make that finding as well and say, uh, I'm not. Whether or not it's worth twenty-five hundred dollars, I'm not interested in imposing that on, that cost on, um, the applicants. And I think that would also satisfy the statute, but if you are interested. In the valuation component, you've got to figure out a way to do that.
So at one time, we had one here by sand brick. It was like a cul-de-sac. And we actually charged them thirty-eight hundred dollars and that, I guess that's the thing that keeps coming popping back up to my mind is. Uh, maybe we did it two or three times and, and then suddenly we quit doing it and it's just like. Do we need to do it or do we not need to do it? And the, the portion that, you know. We're always scrutinized by the public and criticized by the public because we're giving away this land or we're doing this, doing that. It's just trying to address that and making sure we follow the code.
Okay, well, he's just a question. I, I just, if you have, if you had concerns and you felt like. Held to. Get value out of the property and you haven't been set, you're not satisfied from the evidence in the record as to what the valuation is. That can be, that can be a basis for either denial or confirmation. If I'm not, I, I'm not comfortable giving away this property without knowing how much work to buy. Or I'd be okay if I knew.
One thing I, I would like to also mention is, this is, this is, as part of the plat, this is functionally a trade. And the county is getting more.
That's what I was gonna get at deliberation, the fact that we're actually getting more than what we're giving away.
And what we're, we're, and what we're getting is serving to develop a whole bunch more land, which presumably is also going to produce taxes.
Yes, it's a bit of an apples and oranges to the last.
Which is, which is why you don't want to, just because it, you chose to. You got on one or two files and then you chose that it didn't happen later on, like each file is unique. So I would, I would recommend, I would say that you. Don't, don't, um, assume that it has to be done or not done because of a previous.
Hey, any other questions for staff? Here none, we'll go and go to that representative.
Good afternoon, Mr. Commissioners. Thank you for your time. Uh, for the record, Steve Circle with Tri-State Consulting Engineers. Uh, as you recall, if you recall, the last few months, I've been here in front of you a few times on this project on the engineer record for. Cedar Park second edition. And, uh. I was really gonna just comment on that regarding the valuation, but I think you guys are already there. So. I stand for any questions you have, you know, we're, we're, we're eager to. Clean up that plat of the previous platform, the first edition, and then we'll provide that. More locked in, dedicated access valley all the way to Nagle and over with that, as I presented to you a month ago with the subject. So stand for any questions you may have and I want. Thank you so much.
Thanks. So, we're gonna go to public comment. Anybody wish to speak in favor of this, uh, cleaning up this vacation? Anyone neutral? See none, anyone opposed? Oh, okay. Awesome. So we'll go ahead and close public comment. Um, there's no rebuttal needed since there was no opposition. Um, we'll go and go into liberation. Yeah, that, that was one of the things I picked up on in the presentation, the fact that we're actually getting more than what we're vacating and there's a reason for it and. And this is the file that, yeah, we've seen a few times on, on the, the progression of this file. So this is just basically an administrative cleanup.
Yeah, and I'm all right with it too. Um, I just thought it was noteworthy to make sure that we. Treat everybody equally and that we talk.
Not only that, I think you're, you're correct and we should look at that every time regardless.
You have to. Says we have. They never do.
It's a state, they never give us.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm all right with this. This is just, um. Process.
No, it's, uh, it's pretty clear cut that what they were gonna have dedicated for the secondary access, they're just moving it. The different thought, so.
Okay. Well, with that, I'll go and entertain a motion to approve then.
All right, I move to approve this parti- petition file VS zero 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 two dash two two. To vacate a portion of Harris Avenue, finding that it is in accord with Idaho Code. Forty as enumerated in foregoing conclusions of law, based upon the evidence submitted up to time that report was prepared and testimony received at its hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law set forth in staff report. And direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect the motion and transmit to all interested parties. The action that could be taken to obtain the vacation is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Roll call vote. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, motion's approved. Now let's move on to the resolution adoption.
Need number.
I will. I can do it. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution. What was it again? Eighty, uh, two thousand twenty-two dash eighty-eight vacating a portion of Harris Avenue located as shown on the submitted site plan. And legal description.
Second death.
Yeah, we have a motion second. Roll call vote. Hi.
Right.
Hi, and that motion passes and that concludes that file. Let's move on to, uh. ZC zero zero one four dash two two. And staff may begin whenever they are ready.
Okay, Commissioners, good afternoon. Daniel Britt, plenty staff for the record. We're here this afternoon to discuss a zone change from May of twenty to F ten. So Bonner County revised code, uh, twelve dash two one two. A allows any person to initiate an action to change the zoning or the comprehensive plan. Bonner County revised code twelve dash two one four. A regulations, restrictions and boundaries set forth in this title may from time to time be amended, supplemented or repealed. In accordance with Idaho code. Second, uh, section there it's highlighted in red is applicable to zoning. So the amendments. To the zoning established, sorry, amendments to any ordinance establishing a zoning district. Will be made in accordance with the notice and the hearing procedures. Prescribed in Idaho Code section sixty-seven dash six five zero nine and six seven six five one one. And shall require a noticing hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. That requirement has been met. On account of revised code twelve dash two one six, staff and the governing bodies shall review the particular facts and the circumstances. Of each proposal submitted and shall determine whether there's adequate evidence. That the proposal is in accordance with the general and the specific objectives of the comprehensive plan. Each zoning district is afforded a purpose statement which helps guide the application. For a zone change. So in this case, we're looking at the Ag Force District and the purpose for the Ag Force District is to preserve, protect and prevent areas. That are rural character and the integrity of the forest woodland areas where viable cultural pursuit, agricultural pursuits. Can be feasible to avoid the fragmentation of forests and farms. This is the brief history of what our zoning looked like in that area in two thousand and five. To the left there, you will see a zoning map from two thousand and five. Left, this is the area we're talking about here in green. Um, where this area is pointed is the general vicinity of the zone changes. We can see this area has always been agricultural. This is kind of a closer area of it, still green, still agriculture in two thousand and five. So in two thousand and eight, there was a change to the zoning ordinance. And when they did that, they created two different standards. Um, within the Ag Force District. And these are the standards that we're looking at today. Um, for that forest zoning twenty. Um, they looked at the land to see if it has a designation of, uh, Ag Forest. If prime agricultural soils are present on the site. Um, if the use is characterized by agro forestry uses. Um, one or more of the, one or more need to apply. Is there limited services? Is it characterized by slopes deeper than thirty percent? Is that access maybe absent or limited to substandard road systems? Where large tracts of land may be devoted to Ag Force production. And we look at the criteria for the, um, AF ten. We look to see if the landy designation is Ag Forest. It does not feature prime ag soils. But Ag Force pursuits may be viable. And then one or the other may apply to it if it's within, uh, an ACI or adjacent. And if it's afforded, uh, fire protection and access to standard roads or other services. For project summary, the applicant is requesting a zone change from F twenty to F ten to have the ability to pursue, pursue a family division. The request was evaluated against standards for AF twenty and AF ten. They have district allows for parcels within the district to be twenty acres or ten acre minimums based on the standards. The parcels will remain within the current. The parcels will remain within the current comprehensive plan designation of Ag Forest land. So background on this proposal, it is three separate parcels, the total is approximately sixty acres. It's currently zoned AF twenty and the land designation use is Ag Forest Street land. The parcel is accessed by an easement, which is off North Center Valley Drive, which is a Bonner County owned and maintained fifty foot wide gravel right away. So some environmental features on this parcel, it does have some app slopes there that we see to the north. It does contain a wetland that it's rather hard to see on this slide, the wetland runs. Right through here, so the central point now to the southern point of the property. It does not contain any mapped waterfront or streams and it's not within a special flood hazard zone. Services that are afforded to these parcels are individual wells, individual septic systems. Fire protection is provided by Northside Fire powered by Northern Lights and is within Lake pondry school district number eighty-four. There's two different soils found on this parcel, both are non-prime farmland. Soils, however, with proper management of the mission, so low, the soils can produce ornamental nursery stock. As well as small fruits and vegetables. These are the following agencies that were routed for comments, the ones that responded were. Bonner County Road and Bridge, US Department of Agriculture. Natural Resources Conservation Service and a health district and Idaho Department of Water Resources. Other agencies either replied with no comment or did not comment at all. Those comments are found from these agencies in your folders this afternoon. So some public comments in regards to this project, there's concerns about the site posting requirements, traffic. Rural character and lifestyle, population density, increase in light noise pollution. Accelerate accelerated rezonings. And spot zoning, there's some concerns, the letters in their entirety are also found in your binders this afternoon. The findings of facts does not change since the time the staff report was prepared, nor the conclusions of law. So these are the standards set forth as we look at and we break it down. So the existing zoning, which is AF twenty, it does have the line use designation for Ag Forest. There are not prime for prime agriculture soils found on these parcels. They can be characterized by ag or forestry uses. One or more do not apply to any of them, meaning it doesn't have limited services, it's not characterized by super slopes. Thirty percent access may be absent or limited to substandard roads and large tracks may be devoted to ag or forestry production. None of those are applicable in this case. However, it does meet the AF ten. That it's keeping the line east designation for Ag Forest. Does not feature prime ax soils, but Ag Forest pursuits are viable for the the tens. It is not within a city of area impact or adjacent. But it is afforded the protections of fire and access by a standard road system. And other services. So staff has found that this zone change is consistent with Bonner County Revised Code. The zoning commission recommended approval three to one with a development agreement. The development agreement. Recommendation letter from zoning commissions found in your finders this afternoon as well. The development agreement was suggested to ensure that the easement known as Magpie Lane be upgraded to meet appendix A. Title twelve prime road standards. These are some current photos of what the road or the easement looks like today. Missions, that concludes my presentation, I can answer any questions you might have.
Questions for staff? Anyone? Okay, thank you. Are the applicants here, the applicants representative?
Lance Miller, professional Lance surveyor, P O box twenty-five twenty-three, standpoint Idaho.
You don't need your address, but we appreciate it.
Been doing that for forty years. I appreciate the recommendation for approval of this zone change by the zoning commission. That was a lengthy. Discussion and they vetted it very well in establishing the validity. Of making that approval and also reading through the county's, the planning department's recommendation for approval. Again, appreciate their thorough vetting of this request. A couple of questions that I have and a statement on the road, you saw the photograph of the road. And I I know that there is a development agreement that came with the package. Road is probably exceeds most private road construction standards. Already, it's an existing road. And I'm not exactly sure as to the necessity for a development agreement. The owner is willing to discuss that. But there's been a considerable amount of money put into ballast and making sure the subgrade is is workable and. The final crush and the final surfaces on that road. Is definitely as good as a lot of private roads, standard roads I've seen constructed. The other question I have on that is Magpie Lane, and I don't know if you can get a map up on the screen showing Magpie's relationship to the property. Magpie Lane runs from North Hidden Valley Road or Center Valley Road. To the subject property and then run south through the subject property. And I didn't see in the development agreement. Which, is there a cursor here, Dan, that I can? There we go, so North Center Valley Road is here, this is Magpie Lane. Oops, it's a sixty foot wide easement running through the properties here. To the subject property in yellow and then it continues south. To the southerly nineteen point five eight acre parcel, there are three parcels as Daniel mentioned here. In the event that a development agreement is required. Are we talking about a development agreement from North Center Valley Road to the subject property? Does it affect the interior of the property? Or just the access and since this portion of the road is already constructed to such awesome standards. Is a development agreement even needed on that, it would be great to have some discussion there and Jeff. Will comment on his investment in that road it is exists today. The other. Item that I'd like to discuss, there, I didn't see the map that I submitted with the application, but there are. Approximately one hundred parcels. That are five to ten acres in size within a mile. A one mile radius of this property.
It's in our package.
The history there is. Land developed prior to the zoning ordinance. And land that was developed through family exemption or other vehicle that allowed it to be developed in those parcel sizes. Or grandfather parcels. So as far as the zone change goes and. Similar parcels in the area, there are within a one mile radius, a hundred parcels are probably more. That are five to ten acres and. That was also taken into consideration, you can see on especially on the east side, but on the west and on the west side of. North Center Valley Road, you see those parcels that are that are smaller size. The purpose for this request. I know we have the legal aspect, Bonner County Revised Code that discusses legally being able to make this zone change possible. But there's also a family here and the intent is for this family to be able to stay in Bonner County. And to be able to make ten acre parcels so that that can happen. And I know that that isn't something that you can consider legally in your discussion. But I think it's very important, especially in today's climate, to know that longtime county residents are making an attempt. In an area with similar parcel size to keep their families in Bonner County. And that is for the real reason that we're here. So with that, I'd ask if you have any questions, thank you for your consideration and then I'm sure the family will want to speak.
Someone, do you have any questions?
Not sure, I want to talk about the development agreement, but I'm not sure if that's a staff question.
Yeah, we need to, we need to go stand.
So my question is that. If that's what was heard and presented before the planning and zoning. Then obviously unless you want to start over, then that's what we would be considering, or at least that's what I would think.
Well, you could, if you chose that. You have to decide what you want at this.
Yes, we can, but.
You can say that I don't believe that our meeting is necessary and approved it without, it's only a recommendation from the. From from the commission.
All of that's true, I already knew that, I guess, but the the question is that. You know, if it's presented with a development agreement and this is what they're going to do. It could have influenced the way they thought of this file. And then that influences me because I'm looking at, I like the work that our volunteers do. And, you know, they work really hard, it's not that we don't go against them sometimes, but but.
Well, the fact that they required it as a condition implies that they wouldn't have approved it without that.
They're the ones that stuck that on there.
Yeah, I think that'd be probably a question for.
Yeah, give me, give us the history of how that came about if you can.
And might I comment on that question about the extended development agreement, is it from North Center Valley Road to the subject property?
That's the other, that's the other.
Any other questions?
Uh, no, and we'll go, what we'll do is we'll take that up in. Bottle. So start. Doing whatever you do inside your head. Okay, great.
Thank you.
And is landowner wish to speak? Yeah, make sure you identify your name for the record if you would please.
Either way, would.
Yeah, you can do it right there.
I'm Jeff Bickish. And been in Bonner County for twenty years and raised five children here in Bonner County. And were able to purchase this sixty acres and the plan is is to give each of my five children ten acres. And they're all with families and they want to stay in the area, they want to. Not have to move out and because of the prices of everything recently, it's just made it really impossible for them to to stay and so. That's why I'm trying to do this and gift this to my children, so. I just please improve this.
There was a comment about you putting money into the road or.
I've got a hundred thousand dollars already invested in a road that goes from North Center Valley all the way to the bottom of that. That parcel at the very bottom is where.
Done the work on that, what is it, Magpie?
Yes. Magpie is already twenty, over twenty feet wide and and a good road all the way back to the parcel there and so once it. Once it makes the corner and starts heading south, then it's a little bit narrow, it's more like a driveways, but. That that portion in the front is already close to sixty thousand dollars that we put in a really good road, everybody that drives down their trucks, anything, that's it. It's a awesome.
Yeah, it looked like a great road and it's a matter of. Meeting whatever that is and, you know, maybe it already does or close to it.
Yeah, I was I was under the understanding that, you know, they. At North Center Valley is really the access, this was an easement that goes through there and so I I really still. Whatever you guys decide on that, it's it's fine, we just want to help our family.
My name's Susan Bickish, the applicant and. Just pretty much what my husband said, we've been in the area for twenty years and we've raised our kids here and we're just trying to. Something we want to do for our children is give them some property and make a way for them to stay in the area. Cause you know, it's gotten pretty expensive, the land values here and. Just on a personal note, it's really exciting to me to have my kids live near me. And for my grandkids to get on their little bicycles and head up to grandma's house. But. The land isn't going to be used for agriculture, you know, it's just going to be some homes in there with trees and. I don't know what else I could add, but just thank you.
Granddaughters. You want to talk? It's not amplified, so it's not really that cool. Thought I'd give you a shot, okay. So we'll go ahead and move on to public testimony, anybody else wish to speak in favor of this file?
My name's Tiffany Polkey and I'm Jeff and Sue's, one of their daughters. My husband Mike and I have lived here, my husband's lived here since he was four, I've lived here since I was eleven in Bonner County. And he recently, my husband is working for I T at Dyer, the aircraft company here in standpoint. I think we're excited because for me, it's been a dream of mine because I was a kid that was raised on acreage. And so it's a dream of mine and I have four kids. And this is one of them and it's a dream of mine to raise my kids on land and not in town and we recently, we've been living in town and so. This is a just a huge gift for my parents to be able to raise my kids here and I love Bonner County. And we want to stay just like they were saying.
He wants to talk, yeah.
You gotta identify yourself with the record.
This is your chance.
It never fails, it's like with my grandkids, they'll be yammering away and then as soon as I say, okay, you want to say something, they're like.
Anyway, but I just hope you guys consider that, so.
I wouldn't trust you guys either.
Wow, coming from an attorney, no less, trust issue attorney, yeah, okay. Okay, so anybody that's neutral? Anybody, are you neutral? You tried to be neutral last time, I was. Okay, did you want to speak in favor? Because sometimes you actually come up with something good.
Well, sometimes.
It could have.
Yeah, mountain sky signal for the record, you know, when we got ahead and heard this file. The only question because staff, we were not aware of what the road situations were at the time of the file. And so we thought, well, just to be cautious, we'll recommend that, you know, the road standards found in appendix A. It was always my understanding in appendix A, if we look that up, we only have to meet those road standards if it serves more than. Two parcels, so if it serves three parcels, so that portion of the driveway and the roads, in my opinion, as you look at appendix A and perhaps staff can. Correct me if I'm wrong, would not have to meet those road standards because appendix A doesn't call it out. Whatever portions of that road that say Magpie Lane from Center Valley Road to the subject parcel, that probably would. Require meeting the road standard and perhaps it already does. So that's what we were thinking when we gone ahead and when I made that motion to go ahead and suggest the. The the road standards was because I knew that those are in there, if it's only serving two parcels, that portion of the road does not have to meet. Certain requirements. Just a driveway. Um, Mr. Miller had made some comment about, well, another thing that kind of waited for us is that. We heard testimony from all these these families and the kids and everything, well, we didn't hear from the kids, but they were there. And I truly believe that that this is one of those going to be one of those family splits. And Mr. Miller had mentioned earlier that that doesn't necessarily play, you know, as far as code goes, but I I somewhat disagree with that. On our Idaho regulatory takings that guidelines and the questionnaire laid out six questions and one is if, how does it impact? An attribute of ownership and and the question for attribute of ownership is to occupy to. Not allow trespassers and also to devise and so one of the cases that are turning genre uses regulatory takings. Act as Hodel versus Irving. And I'll just read the one paragraph here of the summary, where the character of government regulation destroys one of the most essential rights of ownership. The right to devise property, especially to one's family, this is an unconscional unconstitutional taking without just compensation. Now, I know it's not simply that clear that everybody can run here and say we're going to go ahead and 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 de property to family members now. I don't know if you remember, but a few years ago, you were allowed one time gift to a family member and they had to hold it for a minimum of two years. Otherwise they'd have to go in and platter, we've gone ahead and done away with that, I can't remember how many years ago. So we don't have that requirement to to verify that things are being done for family splits or not. But I just thought I still go ahead and raise that up, that it is, it is something to be taken consideration is when it is divided to family members. Thanks.
Is it something really pertinent? Go ahead.
Yeah. The family division, I believe, and, uh, staff could help with this. Um, requires that deeds be submitted with the application, which means that the family division has to be literally be made to the family members at the time of the family application, family division application. In this case, there may be a time between the times that the parcels are created and they're actually deeded to the children. So this could be, and we've discussed it with Daniel in the past. Um, there could be a minor land division, family division combination. There actually would have to be with six parcels ultimately. So I just want to make it clear that you may see a minor land division come up and family division. Um, in whatever order works with the planning department's requirements. But the ultimate goal, as you know, is family members having property. Thank you.
You want to pose to this? Hearing nothing. Um, staff, where did Daniel go? Let's talk about this, uh, this whole, uh, development agreement. Um, from what I'm gathering, uh, from the gentleman over here who remains, may remain nameless. Um, is that, um, when the zoning commission took it up, they didn't know the condition of the road or what have you. And so that was the reason for implementing the, uh,
So, pressures Dan Brett for the record again, to address the development agreement a little bit. I inherited this file. Um, I think there was confusion, um, when it first went to the zoning commission as to Magpie was actually a road. Um, when we, when I dug into it a little bit further, it turns out it's just an easement. And so if we're going to require those type of standards for every easement for everything gets developed, we could have some challenges moving forward. And even looking at the past, um, it does have the direct access off of North Center Valley Road. So that's where the, it changed in the previous, from this previous staff's recommendation.
Okay. So is it no longer staff's position that a development agreement is? What, what is that?
That Magpie Lane was only required to be, uh, named that by GIS. That was something they came back with. And I'm guessing because of the number of parcels up there, must meet some road naming based on Title thirteen, which we don't govern. Um, the, the code's really quite clear in AF that has to have access from a standard road system. And it does, these parcels do. Easement shouldn't be considered part of that. Like I said, we would have, there's thousands of parcels that are accessed by easements. We're just talking about one this afternoon in a vacation.
But yes, but the development agreement could supersede that. I mean, you know, it's an agreement to do. He wants to, I see, jump on back there.
So, don't say that. No, go ahead, Jake. No. No, I'm sure you were there for the original here. I wasn't there for the original hearing at the zoning commission. And thank you, Mr. Eric, Commissioner Lance Scott for showing up to clarify some of that. That fills in some holes. So there's a couple of things to consider with it. Jake Gabel, uh, planning director. So a couple of things to consider on this. One, it's not typical, right, on a zone change that we require road standards. So I'm not sure moving forward with this development, how it happened, that it would qualify for an MLD with a family exemption. Right. So I think going forward to ultimately to get to where they want to go, they're going to have to meet, um, short plat standards anyways. But unless they're going to, well, under five acres, road standards don't get triggered. But I think ultimately the road standards wouldn't be a, a requirement moving forward on this.
So then we can drop the development.
Right. Right. And so, depending on, and there's, uh, mechanisms in place to ensure that if it goes through the short plat process, if it's subject to that, based on how they decide to divide their property, the road standards would come into play. Depending on.
Because what we're talking about here is just zone changes is, there's no development yet. They haven't done any splits.
Right. The intention sounds like a family split. So if they do, the family exemption has different standards than MLD and/or the short plat process.
So then you have no issue with that if we drop the development agreement for now?
No issue at all, only because I believe it to be an easement, not a road.
Okay. Okay, quick.
I think.
Is it, is it?
Well, I think we closed, did we close?
We'd, no, actually, we did, we did close. We're doing a rebuttal. Sorry.
I do want to make it clear that I have immense respect for Matt Lynn Scott and I didn't want to, um, try to override an important point he made at that zoning commission meeting, uh, when they asked for that, uh, private road standard. And, uh, it is true that no one at that meeting was aware of the level of, uh, improvement on that road. Um, so that was, that was an omission, but, um, incredible respect for Matt and his hard work.
At least that's one person.
Uh, yeah.
Kidding.
Pretty much a baby, but.
Thank you.
But, um, I just wanted to make that clear that I respect the decision he made. And if it was, if the approval was based on that, then we should, we should ride with it. But otherwise, I just wanted you to know that.
Okay, great. Okay. So now we're going to get officially closed again, public comment. Anything else for staff? Any rebuttal you guys have? Anything you want to?
Do I do the rebuttal now?
You have anything you want to rebut? I didn't hear anything really rebut.
No, I just wanted to make clear that they do have a choice between an MLD or family exemption and.
Okay, we're just dealing with this zone change right now.
Right. And to remind the, the board that Magpie Lane is not a road, it is an easement. So not to confuse those.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. We'll go ahead and, uh, go into deliberation and then we're for the public comment.
Yeah, I actually don't have a problem with this at all. I actually think this is exactly, these are the easy ones for me. I mean, you have a family that, you know, has a, has an opportunity to stay in, in the same neighborhood. And, uh, I think that's a great thing. Maybe that's not what we're supposed to be looking at, but you can't help but look at it when they're all sitting here smiling at you. Great kids were the kicker. But anyway, I, um, I think that this is a good use of, uh, of what we're supposed to be doing. I'm for it.
Yeah. Steve?
Yeah, it's the, this is the perfect scenario and something has absolutely nothing to do with file. But needs to be said, uh, five of the best behaved children that's ever been in this room. Which screams loudly to good parenting.
Well, you see, they behave, they actually behave far better than the commissioner too. Okay, so I'll.
Better than the adults.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and wrap it up. So let, let, let's talk quickly about the structural issues here. So when you look at the comparison between Ag Force twenty and Ag Force ten, clearly this belongs in Ag Force ten. Um, the work that's already gone into the road, um, I think, I think it, uh, it shows that, and knowing that's an easement, that, uh, we should probably plan on dropping the development agreement. Um, and I think it is a factor when you have families that want to subdivide land for their own family members, having the same situation. I think it's good for the county. I think it's kids that have grown here, know the culture and love the culture and want to protect. I guess an important aspect for the county is more of an intangible degree, but I think it's an important aspect. So. With that, I'll go into, wait a minute, do we want to, what do we have to do about dropping the development? Are you guys all good with that?
I'm definitely good with that.
Sure. So you just, um, is development agreement included in the motion that we view? It would be a separate motion. Sure. So.
So we'll just do a separate motion.
To approve this and there's nothing, there's no other, no, no subsequent motion.
So I'll, and I'll walk it through. Let's just go ahead and go down the standard order and then we'll, we'll make the motion on the development. So I'm motion to approve. Who wants it?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this, uh, project file ZC zero zero one four dash two two. Requesting a zone change from Ag, Agricultural Forestry twenty to Agricultural Forestry ten. Finding that is in accord with the general and specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. And, and Bonner County Revised Code is enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted upon, up to the time the staff report was prepared. Testimony received at this hearing, I further need to adopt that finding of fact and conclusions of laws set forth in the staff report. And direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect the motion. How the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties, this action does not result in the taking of private property.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Roll call vote. Hi.
Hi.
Hi, ma'am.
Yeah, at this time, I want to go and entertain a motion to remove the development agreement as a condition, um, based on, uh, our discussion deliberation.
I'm going to make a motion to remove the development, uh, agreement based on conversation at this meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Hey, we have a motion to second roll call vote. Hi.
Hi.
Hi, ma'am.
Okay, that motion passes. Last but not least, we need a zone change ordinance motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve an ordinance of Bonner County, the number to be assigned citing its authority, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map of Bonner County by the reclassification of lands located in section eight, township fifty-eight North Range, one west, Boise Meridian, Bonner County, Idaho, from Ag, Agricultural Forestry twenty to Agricultural Forestry ten, and provide for the effective date. I further move to authorize the chair to sign the official supplementary zoning map upon publication of the ordinance.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Roll call vote. Hi.
Hi.
Hi, ma'am.
Okay. And that motion also passes and that concludes that hearing.
I see Jen back there judging me.
Oh, Jake, give us a thumbs up.
Hey, can we take a five minute break?
Yeah, we're going to go in recess. It is, uh, three thirty-one and we'll go ahead and take a five minute recess.
Usually Ag Force.
Yeah, I know.
Agri-cult.
Say if you want, we have, we have. Okay, it is, uh, three thirty-seven and we are back out of recess. And at this time, we're going to go ahead and take up file, uh, AM zero zero one two dash, dash two two. And staff may begin whenever they're ready.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is file AM zero zero one two dash twenty-two. This is a, uh, this is an update to the goals, objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan as recommended by the planning commission. Um, I would like to go over the process of how this update started. Um, briefly.
Yeah, we're going to have one.
There was something wrong with, uh, it's working out. So the process to update the comprehensive plan started in, back in twenty seventeen when Siberia committees were formed. Uh, the five committees were Priest River Old Town, Priest Lake, Segal, Selly Samu, Samuels, um, and Southwest Bonne County. The committee's land use recommendations were submitted to the county in the form of Siberia plans, uh, that were all submitted by twenty twenty-one. In April of twenty twenty-two, Planning Commission was formed to carry on the work of former Planning and Zoning Commission. And the commission's first task was to update the goals, objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan. So during the May, June and July Planning Commission workshops, the goals, objectives and policies presently stated in the plan with review, suggestions were made for reverting, deleting or adding new goals, objectives and policies to either make them align better with the analysis of their respective plan components or the Siberia plans or to determine their applicability to land use as directed by Idaho Code, section sixty-seven, sixty-five oh eight. The goals, objectives and policies of Bonner County's existing plan reviewed in the accompanying document deal with the following components. Property rights, population, school, facilities and transportation, economic development. Land use, natural resources, hazardous areas, uh, public services, facilities and utilities. Transportation, recreation, special areas and sites, housing, community design, agriculture and implementation. The attachments to the staff report included the current goals, objectives and policies as well as the recommended updates made by the planning commission on September twenty eighth. The planning commission received several public comments till till their public hearing on September twenty eighth. And those public comments were considered by the commission in this update that has been put forward in front of you. Uh, since then, one public comment has been received for your hearing that was received on October twenty first twenty twenty-two. The planning commission now continues to work on updating the comprehensive plan with a review and update of the individual components of the comprehensive plan. And to suggest any resulting changes in the goals, objectives and policies if any. The notice to agencies was, agencies and cities was sent on September twenty eighth. It was published in the newspaper on September twenty seventh. Following agencies commenting, Bonner County Road and Bridge Department, Bonner County Historical Society, Idaho Department of Fish and Game. The Clean Water District, Northern Lights, Panhandle Health District. And uh, these are some of the agencies that replied with no comments. Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, Independent Highway District, Inland Power, North of the Narrows Fire District, Cootie Pondraye Seward District. And no other agencies that were notified of this request replied for this file. As uh, said earlier, there were several public comments that were received in the planning commission hearing, but there was only one public comment received that was received for the commissioners hearing. This board's hearing. These are the state statutes which are required to be uh, in which is required for the plan to be in accordance with. While now present the goals, objectives and policies as recommended by the commission on September twenty. In the property rights section, the commission proposes to. Um, delete the first goal that is stated on the, on the. Green here and replace it with protect property rights and enhance property values through consensus consensus. Land use planning that complies with state law. Relevant to all county land use actions. Objectives don't seem to be have. Haven't been changed, it seems.
I'm not sure on well.
All right, Shallen, sorry, I'm not able to do the colors very clearly from here. There are some changes to the policies as well. I would like to highlight three new policies that were added. The property rights of the applicant adjoining a nearby landowners and future generations will be considered as well as the short-term and long-term consequences of decisions. Avoid reductions in land use intensity called down zoning in any county initiated zoning map or development code text amendments. Unless there is a clear useful and significant public purpose which is not a newly oppressive to the owner. The third policy that was added was avoid increases in land use intensity called up zoning via zoning map or land use designation text amendments. Unless such a change is required to address a clear useful significant public purpose or denial would be a duly oppressive to the landlord.
I'm gonna Swari, do you want to talk about these as we take them or do you want to go through the whole thing and then talk about it?
Yeah.
I. I think we better do.
I have some discussion points here for each of the components.
Okay, go ahead and go through those and then we'll, we'll talk about the language.
Okay. So some of the discussion points that were brought up during the commission's deliberation were these ambiguity of the phase phrase two-way street which resulted in the reduction in reduction of that. Uh, first goal from the existing. Um, goals, objectives and policies of property rights. Then there was a discussion about attorney general's checklist and process to make sure that in constitutional takings does not occur. Each land use file to be evaluated against attorney general's checklist. Uh, I briefly discussed what the last two policies and the reasoning behind that. Avoiding down zoning in any county initiated changes with the exception being property owners voluntary agreements to the change or unless there is a public purpose. To ask you not infringe on property rights. Bonner County not starting with a clear slate investments have been made based on existing plans. It does not eliminate uh, down zoning completely. But requires a prerequisite of a voluntary change or for serving a public purpose. So that was the reason behind why the policy for down zoning was put in. Um, there was further discussion after this, there was further discussion about up zoning as well, which was. The reason behind putting that policy in was to kind of balance the down zoning policy. Um. I have some points here. So. Some of the discussion revolved around wanting to balance the right of the neighboring adjacent or adjoining property owners. With the, with the landowner who's requesting zone change or up zoning. Uh, one of the other commissioners interpretation was that this policy was aimed at spot zoning and was not supposed to be used for zone changes, all zone changes uniformly. Um, however, it seems that. The way these policies got written into the plan, they, they would apply to all zone changes consistently and they would not be. It, it won't be a pick and choose scenario where we apply it to some zone changes and we don't apply it to others. Um. One of the major differences between the down zoning policy and the up zoning policy is that. Uh, the down zoning policy was meant to, was meant to include voluntary zone changes. Um, or to, or to leave that like if somebody doesn't want their property to be down zoned, they do. The county cannot pursue it. Push them to do it. Um, that was not the case with up zoning policy. Um. Yeah, that's my discussion on property rights.
Yeah, and I, and I, first I want to start by saying that um. A hats off to the. To the planning commission. I mean, they, I know they've worked hard. They struggled a little bit in the beginning and they lost it. We had to remove a person and. Um, but I think they've done the yeoman's job. Um, I'm also completely in tune with the fact that how hard it is to write language that. Is without loophole. I mean, we see it at the state level. We see within our ordinance, we've gone back and changed things we approved two years ago. Um. But one of the goals that, that we are looking for in this is that um. We've always said that all these documents, this, the ordinance should all be written in plain language so the public understands it. And not leave, try not to leave loopholes that can be exploited or even like, you know, we had to take the word necessary out because people were exploiting that and, and re. Redefining it to meet their needs. And so what we're really looking for is it pretty straightforward. You know, yes, this is okay as long as you meet the laws basically. And I, and when I read this the first time, I was a little bit like, whoa, wait a minute. And then I read the second time, I said, okay, I think I understand the intent, what they were going for. I just think the language might be just a little bit awkward as all, um, but I understood exactly what they were, they were, they were trying to accomplish. Um. Um, I just really think that we need to maybe dive a little bit deeper as the commission here. Uh, the board of county commissioners in the, in these two things, both the down zoning language and the up zoning language. And maybe just tighten them up, clean them up and take away any ambiguity. You have to, you want to.
Yeah, the only thing I want to say is I'm gonna probably echo some of what you said. What we want to do is try to lessen the argumentative point of view on what it says. And so. Clear and precise is what we're looking for. I don't know how we get there and try to, you know, everybody wants to try to explain it. It looks like some of the letters I read that they're actually trying to build more vagueness and. God only knows what into it. So you can argue just about anything and that's exactly what I don't want to see put into.
Want to avoid.
Trying to say, does this, you know, jive with the comp plan? Yes, it does. And this is why. The, these, these descriptions. I agree with Dan. I don't know that I have the solution. But just, you know, instead of land use intensity to be density on both. Um, that's, that's minor, but on the other hand, it's just like, what are we trying to say and how can we clarify it in about two lines?
Simple is good.
Well, and even the language significant public purpose. So that implies that the general public has a right to supersede private property rights, um, the way it's written. I don't think that was the intent.
There is that trying to use the same, I mean. These two, these two processes of up zoning and down zoning are fundamentally different in the sense that. Most property owners will never seek to increase the zoning size of their own property. And so you would only realistically expect that to happen with the government imposing that on them through some sort of legislative process. Like just because that, and we know that from experience, nobody comes asking for. A zone change to increase from tens to twenties. It's always the other way around. So you anticipate talking about like positive and negative rights now kind of like as a private property owner, probably not worried of. You really want there to be a, a clear public purpose if the government is going to come in and tell you, you need, your property needs to be twenties instead of tens. Because otherwise it's just, you want that to be there.
Well, and I don't, I don't see a problem with that with the downside.
That's what I'm saying, but that's, that's why I'm, I'm a little concerned with using the same standard for both because they're just, they're just fundamentally different. Um. You have that concern given the fact that. It's very unlikely an individual is ever gonna voluntarily do that. And so you want to have that protection in place that says it has to be for a clear legitimate public purpose. If this is gonna be put on, put on, whereas you don't have that, the private property owner never has that concern going the other way. Um, and so that's why I. I'm a little concerned about you kind of. Painting both of them with the same brush, you know what I mean?
That's trying to equal it out. On the fact that there is an impact on the neighbors, that's already covered in law.
It is and, and, and say that we need to have a public purpose. To. To bar, to, to zone your own property. It doesn't, the same, the same logic doesn't apply.
Right.
Because you're not. Unless we just want to. To elevate neighboring properties' interest. In, you know, the zoning on your property to make, essentially make them co-equal. And, and I doubt, I don't think anybody's saying that. You, you, you have some, you, you definitely have an obligation to consider neighboring property owners. That's why we, that's why we always said the two-way street, that kind of thing.
Oh, and that's, and that's what the hearing process does.
It is. Um, but to, but to put those two things on, on, on par with each other. Ignores the fundamental difference between, is that fair?
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
I'm following you.
That's just.
I just see it as really argumentative. You know, for a useful and significant public purpose or denial would be a duly oppressive to the landowner. So can you imagine the arguments you're gonna get when you try to. Rezone about it. It, it would. It would be phenomenal. I would think you're setting.
If you, if you want to protect a, a private property owner from, from government action that increases the minimum lot size on their property. You want that reference to clear to, to public.
For downsides.
Yeah, for downsides. Yeah, it just doesn't, it doesn't seem like it. Uh, we've got, you know, spirits of public interest here.
Yeah, we'll do it. We'll do it just, yeah, okay. But I think, but I think that's right because I, we, we've already got it addressed in law that if, if, if I, if my sewer is running under your property, obviously that's a problem. But if my sewers contained everything, you know, I'm doing is, is within the law. Then there really is no issue. We shouldn't have a public purpose.
Commissioner, can I add one more thing to this? So it's for, for this reason, the, the difference that, uh, they just talked about. That there was also some discussion about putting the down zoning policy in the property rights section and moving the up zoning policy in the land use section because it doesn't really relate to property rights.
True, that's not, actually not a bad idea.
Then it just, then you have to decide if that's the kind of ideas you're interested in.
Right. I think that might make more sense. But not only we're gonna always be dealing with, with them, with up zone.
And it.
Although we have one guy.
I know it's one that actually process.
Really? Yeah. Right, right. Yeah, that was a weird inverted zoning verse. Yeah, yeah.
Did the blueberries care?
Good man.
Okay.
Matt, let's bring it open.
Segal Idaho. Um, I was one that suggested that language to avoid reductions lending intensity called down zoning. Um, actually got that right from Cooney County gone ahead and done a, a comp plan amendment twenty twenty and that's where they put it was in the property rights component.
I read your email.
Okay, okay, good. You know, and there were some. You know, avoid reductions in lending intensity, like I say, maybe density, maybe better fit. I don't know.
Intensity. Intensity.
I think density might be better. Correct. I agree. Um, and then it says, it, it goes on to state. Um, in that same paragraph. Uh, the need for map or text amendments should either remedy existing non-conformities or at least not create new ones. The reason why I felt so strongly about having and suggesting this language is if you look at some of those some very comprehensive plans. Especially that Priest River area, there's thousands of acres. That's gonna be going from twenty, their suggestion going from five acre minimums currently to twenty acre minimums. That is huge and I've also looked at their analysis and I don't, I don't think it passes muster to do that. With this kind of language, it's gonna go ahead and state that it's not impossible to do that, but you have to have some clear. Uh, and significant public purpose to do so. That language is steeped from Lupa. Uh, and Idaho regulatory is taking his act um, in, in, in chapter sixty, title sixty-seven, chapter eighty. And it goes through those questions. I alluded to one on, on the last file. The, the language I'm not impressed with is so as soon as I suggested that someone from the audience said, well, we need to also, also to reflect the opposite.
Yeah.
We need to offset that and mirror that. And the, the problem that I have with their language proposed. Is a text amendments unless such a change is required to address a clear useful significant public purpose, no up zoning. You're almost putting back necessary right back.
Everybody. First read this, when I first read the episode, I'm going, we just got word, the word necessary.
This may be worse.
I think it is because I always thought that necessary.
Right, this actually.
Whereas this would be absolutely no, there's no.
No, that necessary wasn't a standard. Technically, this actually creates more of a standard.
Well, it's something that would affect accordance with the confidence of plan.
Right.
At the heart of everything we do.
Right.
Um, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with the down zoning side. I was just looking at them together and noticing that they were. They were written the same, basically.
I basically the same note you did.
So, um, so yeah, I'd be, I mean, I'm sorry, man, go ahead.
No, I mean, I. Um, you know, that's, that's kind of my, my thought process on that because I. You know, as, as we look at the, at our private property rights and stuff and there's been some huge Supreme Court cases. Um, and there's been some comments as well by those Supreme Court judges. Um, huge case in twenty eighteen, Nick versus Township of Scott. Um, and it says, when you're, when you're starting to mess someone's attributes of ownership, you know, that right to occupy, the right to exclude, the right to devise and things like that. Those are takings just as much as this, and through the fifth and fourteenth amendments as they are through the first and second amendments. They, you know, those private property rights are on par with the rest of our bill rights. Um, it, it has gone on so far that in the eleventh circuit court here just a few months ago, uh, three million, five hundred and five thousand dollars. That was the cost to the municipal for down zoning the piece property, one piece property. Three million, five hundred, and they go ahead and reflect and they reference back to Nick versus Township of Scott, which overturned Williamson County and all these other things. Um, we're gonna be seeing a lot more of these cases, especially with the, the way our Supreme Court situated right now. And the comments that, that both the majority made and also the dissenting opinions have made. Kind of they're crystal ball. Well, this is what's gonna happen and now it has, it has started. So thank you for listening to our comments.
Okay. So as far as the process goes. Oh, sorry, online comments. Let us know who we have.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, couple things. Directly dealing with the up zoning issue. When we discuss this, we discussed it. I think more in the context of spot zoning. And um, I think the, the clear. Useful, significant public purpose is probably in alignment with. Most legal standards for up zoning. So that's number one. Number two. Um, it was added in there to avoid some of the problems that you're talking about. Uh, the, or. Uh, the, or denial, uh, would be unduly oppressive to the landlord. Um, I thought that was at least a, some wiggle room there. Uh, but, you know, certainly, the concerns that you bring it up are, are certainly valid. I wish we'd have heard about them, um, from staff when we were discussing this, but there were pretty much crickets. So, um, that's, that's the reasoning of the commission, we weren't trying to be radical in any sense. Um, but that's, that's the reason for it, I want to also say a couple of things. The, our, 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 our position, or I guess the commission's, uh, thought process. Was not that we were trying to align these goals, objectives and policies to the, uh, current comp plan. We were trying to devise goals, objectives and policies that would be, um, beneficial for the future too. So, and we took into this, into account the subarea plans, so. Um, i- i- and, and we've made it pretty clear when we're going through the text of, uh, of the comp plan right now. That we aren't going to change the goals, objectives and policies that we've already recommended to this commission. Um, unless there's something really radical wrong with them, uh, that we find inconsistent after we go through the text, so. Uh, we're not going to go back and revisit it, we're not going to, at least that's not our intent. Um, and so, you know, I want to make that clear, um, and obviously. We did take into consideration the subarea plans and, 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 you know, some pretty substantial public comment. I think Matt could probably, uh, confirm that. So, uh, just want to make those points and, uh. And if we were wrong on that, I mean, obviously it's like, it's your decision.
Well, and Alan, just so you know, when I, so when you read that last line, I, I get, that was where I was able to see what you guys, you guys are trying to catch. Uh, trying to not catch up, but trying to create that, that out, and I understood the last line to be exactly that. Um, what we're going for is we want to try to make this, um, as simple as possible. Because what we've had happen in the past repeatedly is people will read one line, one portion of a line. One paragraph of ten paragraphs and then try to make an argument on it, so we're trying to, we're trying to reduce the amount of drama for future commissioners. And for us, well, as, for as long as Jeff and I are in office, but, uh, so that it's clear cut, um, and what the intent is. Um, and that's why, you know, like I said, I, the last sentence is, is awesome, well, that lasts from useful and significant public purpose. Or from the or, denial would be unduly oppressive. But I'm, I, I just think there might be a simpler way to, to, uh, to reword this so that it's on the upzoning side. So that we're not, um, we're not opening up that, that door, especially when you start talking about public purpose, because we're talking about private property rights. Um, that's where it becomes a bit of a rub.
No, I, I understand, I understand, and the reason that's, that's, we, we just discussed whether or not this should be in, uh, you know, land use or some other component. Uh, we decided to keep it there because the property rights component. Deals with property rights and value according to, to the state code, so that's why we kept it here.
That's a valid argument. Okay. Anybody else, Alan, you done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? That's it? Okay, so this, let's go to process. If we want to fix this, we'll have to hold another hearing, can we, why don't you tell us what it is so I don't babble on?
Sure, so, and Swati, feel free to jump in, she probably knows the state code better than I do on this, so. Essentially, before you guys, you have a recommendation, right, from the, from the planning commission. From here, you can either adopt it as it sits, right, in this hearing, or if you want to make any changes to this, you can. Recommend those changes, or you can make those amendments to it, and then we have to hold a subsequent hearing, we have to renotice that per state law, we can't just continue this meeting, right? So we have to renotice it, republish it, put it back on the website, let the people know, hey, this, this is what the, the board want, is intending to adopt. If you think that there's somewhere. The other thing we could do is schedule a workshop, if, if there's like enough in this where, if it's more than these two, and there's several, you know, any. And we're on the first one, right, so if there are several different goals or policies you want to dive into. Um, we can schedule a workshop and take an afternoon and go through each one.
And I, I don't see a lot of other issues.
Okay.
I mean, there's just some, some questions as to, like under schools, why, why is the county have schools in the complex, we don't. There are separate taxing districts, we don't oversee them, why do we need their data, which we get their data, by the way, every year.
Yeah.
Part of us. Why are we imposing ourselves in areas that we have no authority over, that's, and we'll, we'll talk about that when we get there, but. But, so if we want to, let's say, can, can we approve that, take this, this one paragraph out? And approve the balance, or do we have to wait and approve it all in one shot?
Any, any material change has to be done in another hearing, you can't approve anything unless it's the whole document.
That's good.
Yeah, if you just had like, you know, I would say that, uh, density, density versus intensity. I'd say that's relatively minor change, because those are quite synonyms, but close. So you could probably go ahead and say, we're going to approve it with that minor change, that'd be fine. Whereas what you're proposing, saying we're going to take out a portion that was obviously, like, so a central topic for debate. That's material, so you, you have the power to do it, you just have to say, you would say, I think, um. You know, I move to approve, uh, these components, um, as amended, uh, with everybody understanding what that amendment was. Um, and, uh, finding staff with them, you know, do a subsequent.
Right, we have another, we drafted up a different motion that would go for today, that. Yeah. It, it, it does, so what we would need from you guys today then, if, um, would be what exactly do you want it to say, right? Do we want to remove it altogether and just strike that, or do we want to change it? Um, so we just need to know so that we can create a draft and republish that out, right, and so we want to capture exactly what, what your intent is.
I haven't put any real thought into what it should say, even, even the way it starts, avoid increases in land use, density or density.
That's what I was.
Isn't that the opposite of upzoning?
So now that you have the file before you, we could just, rather than schedule another hearing, we can schedule a workshop to go through the whole documents. I don't, what do you think on that, Bill?
And actually, I, I see quite a bit of stuff, but really. Maybe I could be answered in a question, right?
I'm just looking at our time today, we still have a little bit of time left before, before five, but.
Yeah.
If we're gonna, it, it's awesome that we're taking this level of detail and thoughtfulness into it.
I think that's what.
I should, exactly, so I would say, since, given how much time it's only taken us one, one component and we're. Probably.
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
Let's just say we want to, um, you know, uh, end this hearing today without, um, you know, voting for a proof work now. I mean, this is one, this is just one, you know, this isn't like those other files, part of it, initial, you can say, look, we're going to hold off on. On any decision making at this, on, at this hearing, um, and we're going to schedule a workshop and we're going to do it again. Um, that probably seems, so, it looks, make the most sense.
So we did get this file, this complete file on Monday, and it was quite a little bit to digest, I mean, I took it home last night. Um, and.
Mo- moving forward, they are going to recommend approval on one or two components at a time, maybe three at the most, so you won't get a huge packet.
Oh, so we'd take like the first three of the.
Right, but it is the meat of the, you know, the, the actual opponent, so.
Well, and we felt like we can hopefully help the situation by making some changes.
Yeah, and my, and mo- most of my questions are clarification questions, other than the one about like schools, why are we involved in that, we don't regulate it, I know, I read letters about global war, climate change, global warming. Counties don't get to regulate that, so why would we worry about that, I know it's not in there, but. But, um, and I think the planning, uh, planning committee did a good job keeping that stuff out, but, uh, but there's, that's my, the bulk was, this, was this one paragraph.
What do you think, Swati, we could, we could continue this so that we can make a motion. At the next meeting, so if we continue this to next week, workshop for the first few hours, hold a public hearing. Where we make a motion to recommend, that motion you drafted up.
If we are going to be making material changes, we cannot continue to do it.
Right.
So we may want to end.
I think we're better off, yeah, I think we're better off than doing the workshop, wouldn't noticing.
Right, but we're going to want a motion at the end of one of these meetings where we, they approve the document that they create.
Yes.
Right?
But that'll be the one we do after we come up with the language.
Right.
So, so then you could use the motion that is, that talks about amendment and wanting to adopt that.
Okay. And then workshop it, create that draft, notice that draft.
But I guess, you know, with, with some more time, we could not only read this, maybe come up with some suggestions, because. I mean, as Dan says, well, I don't have a suggestion, but I don't like it, and we should be able to say. This is what we think it should say, or it should be, it should be scratched completely, shouldn't even be in it, right, that's what, that's what we need to do, that's our job. So, I think that that's important.
So how much time do you think the board needs to review this, come up with your suggested changes?
Well, when do you want it, when can we have a workshop?
We, we just need to be agenda noticing, right, forty-eight hours. Right, exactly.
Set it for two years and two months.
In here, yeah.
It's January ninth, so.
So the, the zoning commission meets at five thirty on Tuesday. Um, and they only have one file.
Let me, let me ask you a question, if we do a, if we do a workshop right before the hearing for this. We can make material changes within the workshop, and then you guys will just make them on the fly, and then they'll, they'll be part of the record for the hearing.
Now, we have to notice, we have to notice whatever changes.
Right, so, so we need to have a clear separation, we can't have a workshop before a public hearing.
Public hearing, you just can't make a decision.
Right, so we, whatever it is, your final document saying this is what we intend to adopt, that's what we have to give a twenty-two day notice on. Well, we don't have to do public comment at a workshop.
We don't.
No.
No, we don't.
And really, the workshop is for us to come up with whatever language changes we want to.
Your draft.
And.
Hearing that the public will be invited to comment.
And everything else.
That's fine.
I think it's fine, because planning's still moving forward.
So if we get the final draft, the fifteenth, we can get it out the sixteenth or seventeenth, give us like a couple of days.
We'll schedule it for one o'clock, and we'll just, we need to show up prepared.
No, you have to be done by four thirty.
Yeah, well, we didn't know, the key is, we show up prepared with our recommended, recommended language changes, I, I don't think it's going to take that long.
Okay.
Because there's really not a lot that, there's just some clarification things, and. That was the crux of everything I went through is, like you said, other than why do we, why do we even comment about this?
Yeah, that would try to be a good idea. Let's move some stuff, can we do it?
Well, give me that count, and I'll pay you out of this stuff. Well, but for the workshop, we don't need it downstairs, we don't need.
Oh, I see.
So it's not us, but.
What do you have, what do we have next week?
What about next Friday? Oh, that's, you guys don't work Fridays, and.
The week after that, we're intended because. The end has, um, has, has all day vacation on the tenth, or it closes on the eleventh, for Veterans Day. And prior to that, on the seventh, we have a full day, on the eighth, we have a week, or day on the ninth. And on the tenth, the eleventh, it's more Veterans Day.
She said the same thing twice. So what about, hey, they'll have a good idea, why don't, can we relocate some of these things that want to use this room to the muff? What about? Yeah, we could go to the muff. Oh, you're right.
We've done that before.
Thursday next week?
Damn rules.
Is that enough time? We have a zoning commission meeting at five thirty. That's like our.
I think we just. Yes, it is for me, because I, I guess, yeah.
Five thirty.
We'll make it happen.
Yep.
If we did an afternoon meeting, yeah, I think that'd be more than enough time. We only have.
That works for you.
Just one file for the zoning commission. So if we do run late, we can, zoning commission can start late, that's not that big of a deal. Yeah, so I doubt. I, I, yeah, so I think you guys do need some time to digest this and come up with your draft language, and that works for you.
Yeah, because I didn't even think.
Hey Jake, our, uh, Dan, um, I have a, just a brief comment.
Alan?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, you brought up schools, Dan, and, um. You know, we didn't know why that was in there either, except that it's required by state code.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Everybody state code for us to.
To, to review it, it has to be in the comp plan, yeah.
Yeah.
They.
God, I'd put one line.
Actually, I'd love us to see, love to see us engage the schools more, I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I mean, um. It would be nice to have a conversation.
It'd be nice to have a relationship, but there's still a separate taxing district that they're on board and.
So we, what is it?
I, I look at this as, you know, the things we have authority over.
Right, Don did a fairly good analysis of more or less what we can do with schools in that component review that you'll see when you get that component.
Okay.
So, yep, yeah. Is that one going to hearing with planning? Not, not yet, yeah, I think they're discussing it again next week. Schools and then school facility transportation.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
And we're discussing the text.
I like what county is it that has a really trimmed down comp plan?
Idaho County.
Idaho County, I like their comp plan.
It's like twelve pages.
Twelve pages.
Twelve, but yeah, you can read it.
If you own the property, you do what you want within the law.
They have, they have one zone for the whole county, multi-use.
Yeah.
Seriously.
It's, have you not seen theirs?
I think I have seen the part that was.
It's awesome.
Like what your neighbor doing by the property.
Yeah, pretty much, oh, yeah, that's very, yeah, very frank and direct language, I love it.
You will see when you get the text that, uh, planning commission has, has greatly reduced the text on the components we've reviewed so far.
They've, they've trimmed a lot of the.
Right, no, and, and Alan, I'm not taking anything away from you guys, you, you guys, I know you guys have had a rough trog there, getting through a bunch of stuff, and, uh, and you guys have been doing great work.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate you guys.
My question is.
Lift them the heavy load for it.
Especially with, especially with the kind of pay you guys make with that job, it's.
Yeah, well, even the mileage is a little weak.
But you get, you, you get some kind of food usually, so.
Pizza.
At, at the end of the workshop, can they make a motion to recommend approval or something like, to approve?
I think we have to go to.
Subsequent hearing.
No, I don't think you're supposed to make any use of notice.
Yeah, because workshops are just workshops.
Workshop, okay, so we.
We could, we can make a motion to present this at a hearing on a date certain. You don't think so?
Okay.
Okay.
The workshop is.
Okay.
Purely like.
That's cool, so we don't need a motion, we're just going to make the changes. They'll come back to us. Made.
Swati wants to weigh in.
We're not going to make the change, we're going to make recommended, we're going to come up with recommended language for the change, and then it'll go back through a hearing. Well, we'll present that language.
We're kind of doing that now. Body, we're, we're saying, well, I guess you're right, I mean, in the sense that we don't think it's exactly what we want it to be at this moment. Procedurally, just how to make sure we do this right, um.
Yeah, you'd have to finalize.
Yeah, I know.
So we're going to have, we'll have a workshop, we'll have a hearing with the new language that came out of the workshop, we'll review this change of language, then we'll have to have another hearing.
Correct, to adopt.
We should just have three or four more.
Should be able to do a workshop and do a hearing and adopt it in a, in another regular meeting, right?
Because the, the next hearing will be. Right, because the the next hearing will be.
That's what I'm wondering.
Right.
What to do if.
Well, there is public.
Board will not have another public hearing.
We continue this to next Thursday. And then where they, as a public hearing, and then from there, make your recommended changes, take that to the following.
Yes, I think that sounds pretty good.
That's what I.
So we we continue this next Thursday. No workshop? We make the change, we take the make the change, yeah. We make the changes within that.
Essentially, the board hasn't had enough time to digest this and come up with the language they want, right? So you continue it to next, the next meeting where you're going to make your legislative changes to.
Okay, that makes sense.
Draft up your, and then we'll notice that.
That your, whatever your proposed final answer is.
Exactly.
Assuming that's a material change from what has been recommended from the planning commission, then we renotice.
Yep, I was going to say, can we still have to have another hearing?
And we'll do.
Language that wasn't posted.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just, that's a good idea, Jesse. Just, just continuing this hearing is satisfies our boards.
Okay.
Thank you, Jake.
November thirty-one P M. Okay, got that, guys? So I'll undertake a motion, continue this hearing to November third at one P M.
I'll make the motion.